Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting for Inglewood, March 18th. It's now 7:10. We're going to stand for an invocation and have a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
To our higher power, let us meet together this evening with contentment and peace in our hearts and our nerves and our minds. Let us deliberate and make decisions from a place of dignity and respect for our community and compassion to make it better. Grant us the patience to listen and the wisdom to make decisions that are fair to the citizens of our community. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk take role?
Yes ma'am. Member Sierra.
Present.
Member Berentine.
Present.
Member Cuesta.
Present.
Member Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Potem Russell.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Can I have consideration of the minutes of the previous session, minutes from the regular City Council meeting of March 4th, 2019? Have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the City Council Regular Meeting, Monday, March 4th, 2019.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or concerns? Seeing none, please vote to approve.
All votes being cast, let the record show, seven ayes.
Our sixth agenda item is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. Only those who meet this deadline can speak in this section. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes. Written materials for presentation to the council may be submitted to the City Clerk to my left as a speaker approaches the podium, and a USB port is available for public presentation. First up tonight is Suzanne Dirksen, an Inglewood resident who is here to address Council offering support for Friends of Inglewood Parks. Thank you, Ms. Dirksen. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Dirksen, 905 West Danford Avenue. Good evening. I'll start by thanking each and every one of you for your service to Inglewood and our community. I don't think you hear that enough, so I'd like to share that now. I've met most of you. I'm a member of the Budget Advisory Committee. I currently serve as Board Chair. I've been on the committee since 2017, and I am here tonight to speak in support of Friends of Inglewood Parks and also speak on behalf of the Budget Advisory Committee, and I'll take the opportunity to share my personal views on improving and sustaining the aesthetics and quality of our parks. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Friends of Inglewood Parks in recent months, and I've learned about their mission and vision for improving our city parks, not just in their own individual neighborhoods, but citywide. I commend the group for identifying areas of improvement, which you've all heard about in previous meetings, so I'll spare you those details now. But most of all, I want to commend them because they are identifying solutions to the problem, and I think that's very notable. What I can tell you about this group is that they love Inglewood. They take pride in living here. They are positive, proactive, they're collaborative, they demonstrate good leadership. But most of all, they understand that in order to see change, we need to secure immediate and sustainable funding to support near-term and long-term improvements. Alternatively, they recognize that we do have the option to do nothing and live with the status quo. Friends of Inglewood Parks wants to see change, so the ask of Council this evening is to push for an outline of financial options by May that may inform Council's decision to place an initiative on the ballot in November in support of immediate and sustained improvements to our parks. If Council chooses to place an initiative on the ballot, Friends of Inglewood Parks is willing to provide education and disseminate knowledge to the community. In the event that Council chooses not to or is unable to add an initiative to the ballot, Friends of Inglewood Parks is willing to reach out to citizens at community events this spring and summer to collect the requisite 761 signatures on a petition to add a ballot item. We can expect to see them at the Fallen Officer 5K, the Sounds of Summer Series, and 4th of July Celebration, et cetera. Personally, I believe an investment in Inglewood's parks is an investment in our financial vitality. Our parks have the potential to attract visitors from neighboring cities. I like to believe that it will also bring business to our community. I also feel that aesthetics matter and instill a sense of civic pride, and that's important to me and my neighbors. When we moved here in 2013, we met with some city representatives who shared with us the history of City Park and how that land was reserved throughout town upon the loss of City Park, the development of Cinderella City, and that taught me that our parks are an asset to Inglewood, and I think it's important that we preserve that asset. So, all in all, I like our parks. I am very much in support of Friends of Inglewood Parks. They're doing great work, and I want to highlight their dedication to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Council? Councilmember request to ask a question for you.
Thank you, Ms. Dirksen. I might be asking you to speak for the group a little bit, and if that's the case, just please let me know that maybe the information isn't there yet. Do they have a figure in mind of what they would be seeking if they were to go to the signature round on a bond measure, financially that is?
I mean, it's as big as $50 million, but that's a big hairy audacious goal.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Jason Zachary, an Inglewood resident here to address Inglewood Council regarding food truck licensing. And actually, you might have two people, Dagan Thomas as well. Is that right? Is that why both are coming up? So, you want to go one after another? Dagan Thomas, same, Inglewood resident here to address Council regarding food truck licensing. Great. Let us know which of each of you you are and where your residence is.
My name is Jason Zachary. I live at 3170 South Franklin Street and owner of Barnhouse Tap at 4361 South Broadway.
Dagan Thomas, 4969 South Sherman Street, co-owner of Barnhouse Tap.
So, we, first off, wanted to say thank you to all our patrons who have visited. We've been open now three months, and it has been so exciting to see what neighbors, meeting neighbors, looks like firsthand at Barnhouse. Little side note, we have an awesome write-up in the Inglewood Herald, so if you have a chance, highly encourage, great read. But we are here today to discuss a couple of challenges that we've had with regards to food trucks in Inglewood, and we're asking the City Council to help us address the food desert, and we got that term from city employees as well as other people who nod their heads when they know when we're talking about South of Broadway that there aren't many options to eat in Inglewood, and part of our intention is to address that. So, I'll hand things over to Dagan.
Good evening, everyone. So, we just want to make sure we're here to talk about process and procedure, and that's really what we're here to discuss. We've, as we've gone through this, we've realized that there is now one food truck in Inglewood that's been properly registered, and that was due to us begging and pleading and fighting him just to be a "please do this, or we can have an event." And that seems to be a weird thing for me as a bar owner, I guess, seeing after talking with Paul at the bar and then with Jason at the tabletop, because all three of us would like to introduce the variety and excitement that food trucks can bring. What we found out with Preston, who owns Mile High Cajun, who's the one, is that the process is just very, it's just not easy in comparison to other cities that he's dealt with, i.e. Denver being the big boy, which I know is a hard ask, but at the same time, it's, for him, he's like, "You know, in Denver, I can go in and show them my paperwork. You know, I've been inspected by the health inspector, I've been inspected by fire, I have a state sales license, what do I need?" And it's done, and they give him his fee. Here, it's a 10-day process. He had to go to one window, talk to one person, go to another window, get a question answered, and there's not even a list on the application for a mobile food truck vendor. So, he was really confused as to how to represent his business at that point. So, just those things, I think, just need to be addressed. They're a little bit outdated. We haven't really seen this influx of food trucks until now. We haven't seen a need for that till now, so how and why would we have these procedures in place? A couple suggestions that we have would be, Preston had no idea, and we have 20, just to let you know, there's 22 food trucks that operate at a commissary kitchen in Inglewood. He's the only one that's registered. He had no idea about the events that have been, that they aren't promoted, the Thursday night events to him. Obviously, he works downtown on Thursday nights, but so excited to hear that I can drive my truck less than five miles away and sell to Inglewood residents. He lives in Inglewood, too, so he's very excited about this. And I started talking to him about the movies in the park. So, maybe there's a suggestion that we can offer to whoever does these, that there is a Facebook page that you can reach out to these trucks, and it's specifically for this. Let them know, we have these events, we have things that make it worthwhile for you to come register in Inglewood. And so, that might just be one of the things. The other thing, just to show you, is that we've had two food trucks that have been at our restaurant that have been talking to us about doing a brick and mortar possibly in our building. So, just keep in, keep in mind, those opportunities that can be missed just with that, just that they came to our business and they see that there is, there's business there, money to be spent in Inglewood on the south side of Broadway. They would have never known that if they weren't able to park their truck there and serve those people. So, just a few things to just kind of keep in mind as we think about this process and why we want to change it and why it needs to be addressed.
One other issue that we would love to hear some feedback from the Council on is, starting last July, July 2018, began working with the city, first with a change-of-use permit, and then we did a full build-out for Barnhouse. As you guys might have seen us around, we tried to see regular faces around here and really appreciated how nice everybody was and how helpful everything was. We went through the build-out and worked with a lot of different departments, including the former city manager, who came out and walked the property a couple of times and talked to a lot of different people about food trucks being real central to the design of Barnhouse, that we want to serve great beverages, and we also want to bring a new variety of food to Inglewood. Through that process, everybody was, like I said, very supportive and excited about what we were doing, and through the inspection process and everything else, not once was any concerns or zoning addressed, even though zoning did sign off on it with their inspection. Two months after open, when we were trying to put together an event for St. Patrick's Day, we learned that there was zoning that doesn't allow us to have a food truck within 100 feet of the residential zone, and it was obviously a surprise, especially given that it's a critical component to our business and how the business was designed was for our patrons to be able to, on the patio, still order food and have it delivered without having to leave or deal with the traffic on Broadway or the walking traffic. We felt that this was a more comfortable way for our patrons to have access to food. So, with that, just working, have talked, we're working with zoning, but would love to hear the City Council's thoughts and ideas on ways to address this, because we really would love to have that back parking lot represent something that not only allows the neighbors to walk and get something to eat and drink, but even bigger, just really be an epicenter of community. That's why we bought this building and everything else, and we'd love to work with the city and make sure we're doing things right to keep everybody happy.
You close up.
Okay. So, yeah, so, last but not least, just to close everything up, we have two asks today. One is that, on the procedural side of registration for food trucks, if the city would consider a six-month moratorium on the application and procedure process, recognize and want revenues to the city and following a model that is simpler, like what we at least learned about from other food trucks, where an email that has a picture of verification of your fire inspection and county health, the tri-county health inspection, along with a check, would be sufficient to register instead of a process that takes 10 days and multiple emails and requests for letterhead and things like that. Second, or the last ask, as I mentioned, is with regards to the zoning in our business specifically, we recognize a variance as one of our options to address this issue. We also recognize that can be, well, anyway, we'd love to explore other opportunities to find ways to serve food to our patrons through some type of food truck arrangement, so. Thanks again for your time and all that you do.
Thank you. We have one question for you. Councilmember Berentine?
Mine is just to make a council request, because we had had food trucks downtown, and so I need to know if food trucks weren't on there, how did we do that? I think we might have given some kind of leeway for it, and they were definitely within 100 feet of residences, so maybe rather than trying to do the permit, maybe as a council request, could we see if we could discuss it and see whether there's changes that need to be done along with the process piece of it? I'd like to put it out there for a council request, if that's okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Cuesta?
Yes, also.
Actually, I will remind everyone that Mayor Potem tonight is going to be the one responding to everyone up tonight, and probably will have more council requests, so if you have a council request, let her pick it up first.
Just the associated fee currently with that food truck application. The associated fee currently with the food truck application? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know what the fee is?
From what we understood, it was, it comes out to just over $100 with everything in process. It's like $75, then another $25, and 15 for something else. So, he says basically out $105, $110 total is what it costed.
Do you know if that is, it's good for a year, or do you know?
This is good for a year. Yep. Calendar year.
That was what Dagan mentioned, that there's nobody registered up until we begged and pleaded Colorado Cajun three months into the year. It was a little bit disheartening to know we didn't have any options.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and you'll probably hear some more comments a little bit later after this. Next up is Mr. Jerry Walker, an Inglewood resident here to address Council, no topic given.
Jerry Walker, 4180 South Pearl Street, Inglewood, Colorado, United States of America. Good evening, Council, and good evening, residents who found their way out tonight. It's a little sparse out here tonight. I want to start off with a little raising of hands. Now, I don't expect that to really happen with the City Council, but I have three questions. If your answer is yes, feel free to raise your hand, but even if the answer's not, don't feel free to raise your hand, okay? How many business owners do we have on City Council that actually write a paycheck to an employee every month? Very interesting. How many people on the City Councils have served on a board or a committee for no pay whatsoever in the city of Inglewood? Oh, we have two. That's good. How many people drink Inglewood water in, or do you buy water from the store? Well, good. We have a couple. That's great. I brought some water tonight so that the City Council can help me out with it. I have a friend who lives over in the Simons Center. She's not here tonight. She's at the City Council, I'm pretty sure, and she told me that there was a problem with the water over there, that actually there was a problem with the pipes. Seems that the pipes in that very old building leak. They have pinpricks in the pipes, leak water, and it's not good, and the cost of repairing those pipes is rather significant, and the cost of rebuilding the building, again, would be significant. So, at the Simons Center, they're putting something in the water. Now, I managed to get a material safety data sheet of what they're putting in the water. It's kind of amazing, little sheet here, has a bunch of really good stuff on. I picked out just a few. Section 2 talks about the composition. They say it's mildly corrosive in nature, but it's in the drinking water, don't worry about it. It's just mildly corrosive for the senior citizens and the people who are disabled that live there. Down in Section 4, they talk about with the skin and eyes, that this material can be removed with water if you get it in your eyes, except that it's, you're going to flush it with the same water coming out of the same faucet. I thought that was interesting. But you need to flush it thoroughly, and if it continues, you should get medical attention on this stuff that they're putting in the water. And the product may cause nausea, and you may have some difficulty and discomfort in breathing. You should obtain medical attention if that happens. I'm just quoting what's on here, okay? The product can cause vomiting, nausea, and in extreme cases of, well, I'm going to get this one wrong, hypocalcemic, tinnitus, I don't know what the heck that is, but it's a nice word. Section 5 talks about, it should be treated like an acid, so keep away, keep it away from any contact with bases. Now, I don't know what people are taking for medication over there, whether it has any base in their medication, or if this water would interact with their medication. I really don't know. In Section 7, they talk about the list of respirators that should be, you should be wearing around this chemical. I guess maybe if you strain it through the respirator, it might be better to drink, and the type of protective gloves and eye protection you need when you get around this chemical that's in the water. And there's a lot of precautions for handling and storage, just rubber gloves and things like that, and has to be very meticulously stored if you store it. And I, this is, I will admit, a little strange, and for those who haven't, I have brought some for you tonight, and I brought some cups, so everybody will drink out of the bottle here, look like Moonshine Night down in Lower Inglewood, but I'm just curious as to which is more important, the leaks in the pipes or the health of the people? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any questions for you tonight. Next up would be Councilmember Berentine.
Are you going to be sharing the hazmat sheet with Council?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I would like to, but I'm on pause.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. J.J. Magiata. Inglewood resident here, perhaps not here. All right, I guess he's not here. Next would be C.A. Dickerson, an Inglewood resident here to speak to Council, no topic given.
C.A. Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street, here in Inglewood. We citizens, whether on a committee or not, have absolute rights to deal directly with and complain about staff, police, and code enforcement when necessary. We are their employers and are at the top of the organizational chart. We vote Council in for ease of representation. Council hires the city manager and the city attorney. Maybe Council should be hiring the police chief. Many cities do. They are employees, not dictators, nor should they be exempt from accountability to the citizens of Inglewood. Citizens have to be able to deal with police and code enforcement directly, whether on a committee or not, as employers, not through the city manager. All city employees are there to serve us, not control, not to punish, or vilify, or insult, or intimidate citizens or Council, nor should we be restricted in our dealings with our servants, especially not with any police officer, limited or not. Protect and serve is on their vehicles. What happened to that attitude and that motto? We members of the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee are being stripped of our individual constitutional rights and our ability to function as an advisory committee by the actions of Council and the specious updates. The committee was enabled as the result of citizens wanting and needing to have some say and recourse when code enforcement and the police acted in excess of their authority and responsibilities as assigned by code and unnecessarily interpret code and unnecessarily interpret it improperly. As James Madison said, "We have rights to our property and property in our rights." If, as a citizen said recently, code is being weaponized, it is not by members of the committee, but by Council, code enforcement, and police. The committee is actually doing what it was enacted to do and revealed the inadequate control over the police and code enforcement that the city manager is supposed to exercise and never has. Long-term residents know that the police and code enforcement have in the past and currently run roughshod over citizens, sometimes at the behest of Council members, refusing to enforce codes and forcing codes selectively to punish political rivals. This was never more apparent than in 2011, when the majority forced a vehicle code through CAC and passed that ordinance despite hundreds of protests. Citizens revolted and within a few months overturned that ordinance by a huge margin. There are numerous examples just in recent events that reveal problems with code and enforcement, not to mention the obvious mistakes, such as the code exempts prohibited trees from being removed if they are larger than one inch in diameter. Code enforcement and police point fingers at each other and each denies that they have responsibility sometimes for enforcing certain codes on parking and/or state law, among a very few. For over a year and a half, the city attorney has told the committee to wait on Title 15 review because she is reworking it, because it is hard to administer. Yet, the so-called updates to the enabling legislation limits us to Title 15 review, when according to code enforcement, most of their complaints and activities are in Title 7, Chapters 1A through C on dogs and cats, and Title 7 was the subject of numerous discussions in our committee. Title 7-1-A3 says dogs and cats have to be leashed. Have you ever tried to leash a cat or seen and heard or heard of code enforcement enforcing the leash-a-cat code? Or how about the poop ordinance? All of these issues have been before the advisory committee, among a large number of issues relating to inconsistent definitions and irrelevant codes, and relayed to the city attorney and city manager, who agreed with us, yet nothing was done or said to code enforcement when they overreached and undermined the committee and individual members. The city manager cannot and does not supervise police and all the rest of the staff. We cannot be an advisory committee if we have to sit and wait for Council and/or the city manager to direct us.
Thank you. Ms. Dickerson, I failed to ask you to give your name and your address.
I did give my name and my address.
I thought you didn't give your address. Sorry. Thought that I missed it. Anyone have questions from Council? Seeing none, thank you. Next and last up is Mr. Doug Coan, an Inglewood resident who also is here to speak to Council about historic preservation.
Good evening, Council. Doug Coan, 3051 Marion Street. Have three things. One, nice job on the snow last week. We had this crazy blizzard, you probably noticed, and our Public Works guys did a really good job, so I thank you for that. Second, next Monday night, we're going to have Martha Kirkpatrick talk about the history and future of Loretto Heights College, and this, an invitation to y'all in the front of the room and the back of the room, too, downstairs at 2:30, and over at the Brew on Broadway at 6:30. And third, I want to share, I heard about a strange proposal from a nearby town that I thought you'd be intrigued by. Like Inglewood, their City Council has members-at-large and district members. There is a movement afoot to change the way their council works. The at-large members represent the whole city. The district members, only parts of the city. Each of the three at-large members represents tens of thousands of citizens. The district members, only a few thousand each. Should the district members have the same voting power as the at-large members? Why should the members who represent small numbers of people have the same power as the others? Advocates for this change say that the district members should not have the same rights. The belief is that the district members have too much power right now, since they have more votes than the at-large members and can override the four, can override the three. The change would require that only the at-large members vote on city-wide issues, because they represent everyone, and that the district councilors would not have any vote on the issue at all. And I guess I started to think, well, what would that look like if it came here? We have issues that Member Sierra is going to talk about tomorrow, paving the alleys. Paving the alleys is going to be really expensive, so I guess that would be a city-wide issue that the three would be able to vote on and the four would not be able to vote on, because they represent a smaller number of people. ADUs. If the three said there should be ADUs everywhere, should the district representatives be able to say, "No, I don't want them to mind the to say, "No, I don't want them in my neighborhood"? We have two expensive storm drain issues coming up shortly. One over by Charles A. School, and then the other one over here in South Inglewood, where we had the flood last summer. Who would decide those kind of things? Would those be a citywide issue? The money would have to be citywide issue, I suppose. A very interesting conversation I was listening to, I had to turn on my hearing aids so I could get all the details. You know, we're having that, let's see, we're having that same argument nationally. Should the smaller population states have an equal voice with the larger populations, the states with larger populations? Or should the majority vote by those who represent more people, control the outcomes? An interesting dilemma. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Questa and Sierra, get two.
Mr. Coen, you piqued my curiosity as well. Which district or which municipality is that that you're speaking of, considering that not?
Well, I had to promise not to tell.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
It's a secret.
Councilmember Sierra.
Actually, so for Mr. Coen, just as a clarification, the town hall for tomorrow isn't going to be specific to paving the alleys, it's going to be a wider discussion about the alleys overall. I'm sure paving the alleys would be a topic that comes up from citizens, but just to clarify the agenda of the meeting.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our recognition of unscheduled public comment. The same that I read earlier holds true. Everyone conduct themselves in a respectful manner. This is when people have three minutes to speak. And our first person up tonight is Mr. Mike Jones.
Mike Jones, 4851 South Pennsylvania Street. Good evening, council. Thanks, Doug. Your insightfulness is always interesting. Let's keep that secret of where that is a secret as long as we can. Oh, and by the way, if you guys haven't had a chance to go to any of the Historic Society's presentations, they really are good. The one on Cinderella City, I understand, was a real knockout. So, last Wednesday, council was to interview the companies that submitted bids on the EEF audit proposal. Do they implement whether? That has now been rescheduled. There continues to be a great deal of concern regarding the effectiveness of the current council. Over the past year, I've seen council become very dismissive towards constituents when accusations have been brought up. The situation with EEF is a prime example, although not the only one. Previous council members and mayors have become downright defensive at the suggestion that there were improprieties surrounding the structuring and oversight of EEF and EMRF. Only with diligent work by Inglewood citizens, definitely not council or the city, have the issue started to surface. We're beginning to wonder what these previous city officials are hiding. The delays in dealing with these issues go to the heart of a lack of transparency in addressing serious concerns by our citizens. In the November 8 study session of last year, Maria DeAndrea sat before this council and provided a thorough overview of EEF and EMRF and where it stands today. It was reiterated that council had voted not to perform a performance audit in March of that same year, to put to rest any questions regarding EMRF. I applaud council for this vote, as Maria documented that EEF already is part of the annual audit conducted on the city. This performance audit would have been nothing more than a whitewash. Her conclusion and recommendation included that a forensic audit be performed on EEF's finances from the date of inception to the current date. The RFP that went out appears to be comprehensive with regards to these recommendations. In order for the city to continue to foster any type of transparency, at least in this area, it is imperative that council not waver from a forensic audit. When interviewing and deciding on the company that will perform this audit, the city will be watching closely. A final note, in attempting to go back and review a number of previous council meeting agendas and minutes, I'm once again faced with an iCompass log-on page. I've provided you with that page that I received. You'll also have a copy of page three of Maria DeAndrea's notes from the November 8 study session, as well as that error. My question is, is anyone monitoring these pages? And to the mayor's comment during the mayor-manager meeting, I do know what staff goes through. I manage a staff, and I understand how roles and responsibilities work, and that we don't coddle individuals to avoid unpleasant trees.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Berantine has a question for you.
So, why are the inclusion of the iCompass page?
So, when I went back to take a look at some of the meeting minutes from previous council study sessions and council regular sessions, that is what came up, rather than the minutes.
And have you signed up, or do you have a concern about doing that?
I have a concern about, there are no instructions. I don't know what to do with that. I don't know if that's an error page. I don't know what it is. It is not consistent throughout. So, sometimes I can get PDFs that pop up with the either agendas, or the minutes, or whatever I'm looking for. Sometimes I don't.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next and last is Mr. Joe Anderson. Hi. State your name and your address.
Joe Anderson, 4061 South Cherokee Street. Before I start with my comments, I just want to say I really enjoy J.J.'s, or Jerry Walker's Grape of the Week, especially like when he brings props, makes all that much more entertaining. So, thanks, Jerry. Appreciate it. I was reviewing the preliminary financial report that was included in your study session information today, and just wanted to take a few minutes to encourage you as city council and any city staff who happen to be in the room here. Last year, we had a net gain of 145 businesses here in Inglewood. More importantly, our sales tax revenue increased by 5% from 2017 to 2018, and our total revenues exceeded our expenses by almost $6 million. Our business environment is thriving. That's significant for a city with a budget, that $6 million is significant for a city with a budget under $48 million. You, as council members, are the gardeners of our city. A gardener's job is to cultivate and protect. You can more extract more revenue out of your community by force than a gardener can pull more fruit out of his garden by tugging on the leaves. But what you can do is tend to the soil of our city, create the optimal environment for fruitfulness. You can incentivize physically productive land uses. You can allocate Inglewood's resources in such a way as to encourage a thriving business community, and you can foster a fruitful community by how you speak and engage with your citizens. So, here's my encouragement to you. This financial report tells me that in spite of several challenges in 2018, including summer's big flood and losing our city manager, you have managed to cultivate a fruitful business environment. And as a result, cities' coffers are growing. Like many other citizens, I want my kids to grow up in a fruitful city. A city with tall trees, full green grass, thriving businesses, and a thick and life-giving culture, as well as rich relationships between neighbors. Every citizen has a part to play in bringing about that kind of future. But US council members have been given authority as gardeners of our city to cultivate the soil to produce lots of fruit. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? Seeing none, thank you. That concludes our unscheduled comment time. Mayor Protim is going to be the one who responds tonight with any particular council requests.
Thank you. I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight. It is always helpful to get input from all of you in making decisions for this city. And Suzanne, thank you for your support of Friends of Inglewood Park. Council will be looking at that, and we will be determining what we're going to do. I think there are a few things on our agenda that we need to look at, and so that will be one that we are considering. Jason and Dagan, thank you for coming out tonight. I greatly appreciate it. And I did, for those of you who have not been there, I was there last weekend, and the one food truck that is licensed is what? Mile High Cajun. We were there. It was amazing, so I would encourage you to try it. And I just, I want to thank you for reaching out to the city and helping us better our processes. And so, I would just like to, the two questions that I saw is on the procedural registration for food trucks. Could we explore a six-month moratorium and also simplifying the process? I would like to look into that. And then, variance was the other option. Could we explore other options? And when I was there the other day, I was talking with Dagan, and the way they have it set up now, to have a food truck in the back would be great. And so, I would like to explore that possibility without having to put a fence up, because I think it would be much better to have it open back there. So...
Could I get a point of clarification on the council?
Mr. Walker, thank you for coming, as always. I do appreciate illustrations also, and I know that this is a very important issue that we need to address. And I have been working with some of the people from the Simon Center. I have found out what the product is that they're putting in the water, and I think that this is something that I will talk a little bit about during council member's choice. Coen, I greatly appreciate your insights of sitting on that committee, and I absolutely agree with you that citizen advisory committees are ways to get involved and help the city, that you citizens are the boss. And we need to make this much more friendly. I'm very concerned that this whole shutdown was a political issue, and so hopefully, we will get through this process and be back on track shortly. Doug, as always, I appreciate your insights, and I actually stayed home during the blizzard. I did not go out, and I was very thankful for that. And by the next day, everything was cleared up, so I didn't have to worry about it. I would encourage all of you to attend Martha Kirkpatrick's presentation about Loretta Heights, and I drove by there the other day. There are things happening over there, so I'm, I think that would be a great thing to do. That has been, Loretta Heights has been there forever, even before I came here. So, and then, the strange proposal. Thank you for those ideas as well. Also, Mike, thank you for coming forward, and I know that you are speaking from experience and having worked for a big, a private company, I think we can learn a lot from you, and so I thank you for coming forward to share. And Joe, I greatly appreciate your insight in cultivating a fruitful business environment, and the budget does look really great, but also, the stormwater project is going to cost us a lot of money, and what we've done is only a drop in the market. So, we do need to be very careful, although there's good things going on, there are also some challenges that we're facing. But thank you for the encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have no communications proclamations and appointments. Agenda item nine is consent agenda items. We've received a formal request from Councilmember Berantine to remove into regular consideration nine C.1, two, four, five, six...
Seven.
Seven. Yes. Five, six, and seven. So, that would remain nine B.1 and nine C.3 only. I would like to get a motion to approve nine B.1 and nine C.3.
I asked for the last ones, because they're all vehicles, to be done as a...
That's fine. We have to...
Okay. I move to approve items nine B.1, nine C.3.
One second. All right. Please vote.
All votes passed. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. So, first up then is nine C.1, council travel to Colorado Municipal League Conference. So, I think our interim city manager is here to answer any questions related to this, and then we'll take it to a vote.
Thank you, mayor. I will not summarize, except to say that this is approval of travel, council travel to the Colorado Municipal, you know what I mean? The league conference this year. So, if there are questions that we could answer, I will follow up that line.
Councilmember Berantine.
I appreciate, and I put this in the email, I believe there was a thoughtful conversation about changing what's historically come to council to go ahead and be voted on and not put on a consent agenda, that would be the first time that's happened. I do appreciate the conversation, I just disagree with changing it in that manner during the mayor-manager meeting. The second issue is the questions that I had, is, has the deadline already happened to apply for this?
I think the deadline for early discounted registration has passed, but we could probably find, I could explore what you could do if more people wanted to go.
Okay. And then, I believe that the reason that it was brought before council publicly to be discussed was so that it was made public, who was attending and why. Previously, there was a requirement that council had as a policy for us to ask why people were attending, why they wanted to attend, and if there was enough money in there. And I think that conversation still needs to happen. So, who are the members that are attending?
My understanding, it's the mayor and Councilmember Wink. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
At this point, those are the only two that indicated they were interested in going.
Okay. And you said the deadline was when?
I'm not, I think the deadline for early registration discount was the end of March, and end of February, excuse me. I know it was very early this year, and you'll forgive me, Krista took care of those details, but I could look that up.
I know there were some in the past when people just wanted to go up for a day or anything that was made available. And what is the budget piece of it?
There's $17,000 in the council travel and budget, and each one of, the total cost is $1,970.70 for two members to attend.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Seventeen thousand is the annual budget, it appears, for 2019 on travel. Have we had any expenditures out of there yet? Or is it...
No.
You, mayor, may not know offhand, do you recall what that figure was last year, the total?
I don't know, but I could certainly find out and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I would like to state that my reason for going is I did not go last year, and I think it's sometimes important to go every year, but as mayor, I feel like I really should be up there this time. I'm taking a change of my schedule in order to do it. I find it helpful. I am particularly interested in a couple of items, historic preservation, as well as the homeless initiatives that are being done around the state, so those will be the things I'm seeking out while I'm there. Councilmember Wink, would you like to respond to anything?
Not really.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, could I have a motion to approve nine C.1?
To approve nine C.1, council travel to Colorado Municipal League Conference.
A second.
All right. Please vote.
I have one other question.
Councilmember Berantine, when I do ask for more questions, would you please respond? Yes, one more question.
The procedure as far as here is that after it's voted on to be the motion, that then that's that discussion and not questions, so it's discussion.
You'd like to have a discussion.
I apologize for not understanding what I was doing, sorry. It has been in the past that we have required anybody who's going to CML to go ahead and agree to do a report after they have attended on what they did and what they got out of that. Do we understand to expect that again?
Oh, absolutely, on my part. I've done one every single year I've gone up there, and there have been many years where I was the only one, and no one thought we should do it. So, I'm glad that you asked, because I always do one, and would be glad to give you any from the last years that I've...
You always have, and that's why I brought it up, because I have benefited from them greatly.
Good.
And greatly appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we understand that...
As mayor, I am going to hold our feet to the fire on this, so Councilmember Wink, I'm expecting you to do as well, and I know you will, you did last year. Happy to do.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? One last thing I will say, if you do want to go, there are many pleas for this with requests via Krista Gravy. If you do want to go still, please let us know. It will be a little uptick in the amount, but we certainly can accommodate others who still want to go. still want to go. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you.
And I do want to say that I greatly appreciate that the mayor is willing to go again and represent the city we should be represented at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is nine C two, Pirates Cove Food Vendor. Staff recommends that city council approve by motion a contract with Shamrock Foods to provide food concessions at Pirates Cove. We have our supervisor, Brad Anderson, here to answer any questions. Questions only. Mayor Protem Russell, question.
Who did we use for a food vendor in the prior years, prior to this year?
The very first year, we used American Concessions for two years. Then we did Vistar for a number of years after that. The last year and a half, we were Shamrock Foods also.
Which is who we're going to hire now? So Shamrock has done, okay.
Yes.
Any further questions? Councilmember Berantine.
I think it was pretty similar, because you didn't have that many, it didn't look like you had that many vendors who met the qualifications. So I was, how did you do the process before?
We didn't do them before, because the policy for purchasing was different. Once the policy came to, if we go above $25,000 of purchases, we needed to bring it to city council. So in the past, we didn't bring it to city council. But that policy changed, and I brought it forth this year.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So last year, it looks like Pirates Cove pulled in 1.5 million, give or take, on an expenditure of 1.3 million. So it made over $200,000 this year, which is great. Do you know how we typically do on concessions? Do you know how the revenue typically are on those? Are they a break-even product?
Oh, absolutely. Historically, for the past 15 years, we're averaging net $40,000 in the concession stamp. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve nine C two, Pirates Cove Food Vendor.
I'll second that motion.
I'll, Wink, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
So the next, thank you very much. The next four are all a part of one. And Councilmember Berantine asked if we could deal with these all at once. I'm just going to ask for clarification from city attorney. Can we deal with them all at once? We need to vote one by one.
I believe you need to vote one by one on these, because they're being purchased from various vendors.
Thank you. We could probably ask questions altogether, so stay up here. The first one is the vehicle purchase Police Department Detective Special Operations and Fire Marshal Vehicles. Any questions from council? Here are two, yeah, is this the correct folk? Yeah, Maria DeAndrea and...
Commander Fender.
Commander Fender is here to answer any questions that we have. First up is Mayor Protem Russell.
Why are these purchased out of the Public Improvement Fund? Or is this the Capital Improvement or Capital Equipment Replacement Fund?
It is the SERF, Capital Equipment Replacement Fund.
Okay. Did I see Public Improvement Fund on any of these?
Shouldn't have been. I think, I'll look in the memos here, is we're, I think in the second paragraph of the summary, looks like they all reference SERF.
Okay, this is SERF, okay. So why is it that on some of these vehicles, on this, on the first one, the Police Department Detective Special Operations, that some of these were seven years, and it actually went longer than the seven years? But some of them, like the Chevy Tahoe, well, it went longer also. The Ford Escape Hybrid was scheduled for replacement this year. And actually, the Chevy Impala. So why were you able to get extra life out of some of the vehicles and not out of other vehicles?
I can speak to that, and Commander Fender can speak to individual units as well. We do evaluate the vehicles each year to determine whether we should keep them for another year. And in this case, in some of these, we have held them over for several years. So at the top there, that 2008 Chevy Impala was supposed to be replaced in 2015, and we're just now doing that. There's obviously a cost trade-off for that. We're, there's more maintenance when we keep it for a longer time. There's also a tendency to have more, some of them can get damaged more frequently, and especially for patrol vehicles, we want those to be as high quality as possible. With newer vehicles, we are trying to get those in sooner, just because there are so many safety improvements that have been made in the last few years, and that have become standard now on vehicles. Commander Fender, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just exactly what the director was talking about. We've got a lot of vehicles, especially the 15, 16, 17, 18 vehicles that we're talking about, the ones that were supposed to be replaced. We're having higher repair instances. Vehicles are down for a longer amounts of time, leaving us with less vehicles for public safety and to do our jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Berantine.
How many vehicles does the Police Department have altogether?
Don't have that number.
Okay. At this point, I'm not sure why we're doing all 17. Between this packet, we're doing 17 vehicles at the cost of over $367,000. Some of them, I'm not sure whether the capacity, how you're determining which vehicle to get. The capacity for code enforcement for a five-person vehicle doesn't seem like it would be, make sense. And then I also had a question on whether the logo goes on all of them except for the police unmarked vehicles, what the policy is for making sure that the logo to identify it, the Inglewood vehicle is.
I could address part of that. All of the vehicles that we've, the patrol vehicles, we've designated as marked, are fully marked police vehicles. The other vehicles that are assigned to the Fire Marshal's Office and Code Enforcement will all have the city logo on those vehicles. The unmarked vehicles assigned to Special Operations and Detectives will not have any markings.
And how many vehicles are those that will not be marked?
Probably...
Is that the six, or?
Probably four.
So four of those six will not?
Out of this group, I'm having a hard time separating all of them. I apologize. Out of this group of vehicles, I can tell you that, I can't, I can tell you total, out of the 17 cars, there'll be, it looks like seven will be unmarked. And that includes the van for victim assistance.
Were you able to find, I know you were looking, were you able to find how many vehicles the Police Department has altogether?
No, but just to answer, we'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not certain. We do include in the budget every year, a list of capital equipment replacement lists. So all of these have come from those lists, from the various years, as in the, it'd be the, one, two, three, four, the fifth column where it says planned replacement year, that corresponds to the list in the budget.
I believe Pat did that list before, I think, when he...
Correct, yep.
Is he still with us?
He is not.
Okay.
But what we've done is, with each department, we started with Police Department, because we feel those vehicles are critical, is we sit down, talk with the mechanics, and talk with the officers and the staff who are actually using them, to come up with a list of which ones we feel should be cycled out and replaced. So that, so we take the basic list and then work from there. That's why we hold over seven and we don't hold over...
So you take the basic budgeted list and then go over it, but not all of those vehicles necessarily get replaced after they're reviewed?
Correct.
Right, because it's budgeted prior to you doing that review.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. And this is for my clarification. We are going to discuss each one of these individually.
We have to vote on each one individually.
Thank you. So we'll do question and discussion on each one individually, and we're currently on nine C four.
That's correct.
Thank you.
The questions have bled over.
Thank you. I'll reserve questions. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Russell.
I just have one other question. This is a general question. Do you know if you'll be coming forward for any more vehicles for the Police Department this year?
No, this should be it. There will be requests from other departments, though.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Berantine.
Just one other question that I did ask. Why are all 17 purchased at the same time?
Because Commander Fender has done a lot of the legwork to get these moving, and we're trying to meet certain dates to, for the state contracts, to purchase those by certain dates, and then we can get them into the fleet as soon as possible.
Okay, and what's, what is that deadline?
The deadline varies from vehicle to vehicle. Our first deadline is coming up on the 21st for some vehicles of this...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve?
I move to approve nine C four, vehicle purchase for the Police Department Detective Special Operations and Fire Marshal Vehicles.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Next item is nine C five. This is a vehicle purchase of Police Department Patrol Vehicles and Victims Assistance Vehicle. And again, our Director Maria DeAndrea and our police are here to explain further. Any questions? Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Good evening, Director DeAndrea and Commander Fender. For these seven chargers that we'll be replacing, it looks like Impalas, Caprices, and a Tahoe, and there's a van in there as well, excuse me, the cost is $27,746. Does that include all the equipment that the patrol vehicle will be outfitted with?
No, sir.
And where does that expense end up appearing? Or is that you...
That expense is coming. The director's going to bring that expense, depending on the purchasing amount. And, but we don't have those numbers finalized yet on the updating for those...
Understood. And on the police cars that will be retired, what happens to those cars? Any of that, even beyond the vehicle, is any of the equipment reusable? Can that be placed into the new...
Well, some of the equipment is being reused, so whatever can go from car to car will be reused. The, most of that equipment frankly is, lasts for a while, depending on the model of the car, though. And so when you, sometimes when you have to change the models of cars, those expenditures do go up, because those cars, for example, the Caprices aren't made anymore. So we're having to buy chargers, because they're the only full-size police car made now. So some of that equipment will go over in some way.
Very good. All right. And my final question here, on the nine C five that we're currently on, there's an Impala that had a seven-year lifespan.
Do you hold off on that one for just a minute?
You bet.
So we can finish four?
I'm sorry?
Can we finish four? Are we on five? I'm sorry. I have the two pages back to back. Sorry, it is five. This sinus headache and cold is not serving me well tonight. Keep going, Councilmember Questa.
So in the nine C five, there's a 2011 Chevy Impala that we're placing, and that had a seven-year life expectancy. And this, it looks like, is for the patrol vehicles. There's a detective vehicle, and that's on nine C seven, that's also an Impala. And that one only had a five-year lifespan to it. Is there a reason that there would be the difference in lifespan between those two, same model of vehicle?
Yeah, it's based on what they're being used for. So I believe the Impala that you're referencing, or the one in this group for the five, is a patrol vehicle. They're going to get more wear, more stopping on the brakes, and so their life is going to be shorter because of that. And the other one is a detective vehicle that detectives will use more like a typical vehicle.
That was, so it's seven on the patrol car for the Impala, and five on the detective. And I had that same line of thought, that possibly, understood. Okay. Thank you.
I may have made a mistake there, Councilman.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Berantine.
Have we always had a victim assistance vehicle?
Our victim assistance advocate has always received a vehicle stipend.
Uh huh.
But we're replacing her stipend with a vehicle this time, because we were fortunate enough to get a victim assistance canine in the last couple of months, and she's transporting this dog back and forth from home. So we do have a dog that has joined our Police Department. And so she's transporting this dog named Florentine, and she's from San Diego. So Flo is going back and forth from her house, so we're replacing her vehicle stipend with a van, so the dog can get in and out of the van. And I can try to explain the dog's function a little more, if you'd like me to.
The name alone is enough. The stipend commensurate with getting the vehicle, is that kind of a trade-off? How much do you...
Probably a wash, from what we looked at. It might be a little bit more expensive to have the vehicle purchased than it would be for the stipend.
Was the dog extra with her?
I don't believe the dog cost us...
Did the dog get a salary? No?
No, the dog's not being, we are feeding the dog and taking care of the dog medically.
And if you do that comparison, then you would take into account that you have the extra, if you believe the dog is a benefit with her, then you have that at no additional cost either.
With the dog, not that I'm aware of.
Some food, some treats. Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Any further questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
I move to approve nine C five, vehicle purchase, Police Department Patrol Vehicles and Victims Assistance Vehicle. A second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Now we go on to nine C six. Am I correct on that? Yes. Vehicle purchase Police Department Code Enforcement Vehicles. And Maria DeAndrea and Commander Fender are here again to answer questions.
Here again, we have an addition to the fleet, so that second vehicle is for code enforcement for the new position that we added.
Any questions, council? Mayor Protem Russell.
So I know this question has been asked. Why would we need a five-passenger vehicle for a code enforcement officer?
So one of the trucks is, one of the trucks is a four-door truck, a crew cab truck, for a $2,000 outfit from the other one. The enforcement supervisor asked for the crew cab truck, because he told me he transports people regularly, as well as he has more equipment that he needs to put in a controlled environment inside a truck than the other code enforcement officer.
Is transporting people part of his job description?
Yeah, other, other code enforcement officers to and from meetings and things of that nature.
Councilmember Questa.
So this goes to that new position. Has that person been hired yet?
No, that person's not been hired yet.
Is there...
It's in process, yes, sir.
So there's a job position posted?
Yes, sir. And we've already taken at least one candidate to background, and I'm not sure where that stands.
Very good. And maybe it was my own lack of clarity. I didn't realize that that was going to be a full-time field enforcement job, but the vehicle somewhat implies that. Am I maybe presuming too much?
It is a full-time field enforcement job.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Berantine.
So that'll mean we have five people that are in the field, working.
Yes, the supervisor, as well as four code enforcement officers.
And the supervisor then, obviously, then uses that vehicle to conduct code enforcement as well, then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Russell.
Do any of the code enforcement officers take these vehicles home at night, or do they leave them here?
They're left here.
Thank you.
No further questions? Could I have a motion to, Councilmember Berantine, one more?
Never mind, I'll ask it on the next one.
No, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion to approve, then?
Move to approve Agenda Item 96.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Next is nine C seven, which is the vehicle purchase for Police Department Detective[1725.54] Next is 9C7, which is the vehicle purchase for police department detective vehicles. And again, Director Maria DeAndrea and Commander Fender are here to answer our questions. Who wants to kick us off? Questions, Council? Councilmember Berentine.
Are any of the vehicles allowed to be taken home? Do the officers or any of the detectives use the vehicles for their own personal off-duty as well?
Um, there are some vehicles that are taken home. Uh, the investigations unit has on-call detectives that take their vehicles home so they can respond, as well as most of police command staff, who are all on-call 24/7, take their vehicles home.
Okay. And, but those vehicles would be police-marked vehicles?
No, ma'am, those are unmarked vehicles.
Unmarked vehicles, so nobody would know because they wouldn't have the Inglewood logo on them?
That is correct.
So, um, is there any restriction on having the vehicles outside of the city limits during the time that they're working? I, I had some specific question I promised I would ask.
If that's your specific question, the restrictions are, uh, based on IRS regulations. So there is limited personal use of those vehicles.
Okay, so, launcher during the day, or if they're out of the city for any specific period of time, for a couple hours or something like that? If that was happening, somebody should probably report that, or call in?
If a parked patrol car?
No, code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Um, code enforcement does do business outside of the city, I guess, if I'm reading your question correctly. So yes, there are, I guess, many times that there would be a code enforcement truck outside of the city.
Okay. If that's a possibility, then I've asked my question. I did my duty.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve 9C7?
I move to approve 9C7, vehicle purchase, police department detective vehicles.
A second?
A second.
Councilmember Wink. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearing tonight. On to agenda number, agenda item number 11, ordinances, resolutions, and motions. 11A1 is CB9 procurement policy ordinance. Staff recommends city council approve a bill for an ordinance to approve the municipal purchasing policy. The staff, administrative service director Maria Zada is here to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Council. Um, as you recall, um, we have discussed the attached procurement policy grid in two study sessions, one held on February 25th, and the last one held on March 11th. Uh, during the conversation, there were suggestions that were made regarding updates to the grid that have been made, uh, per the memo. And so tonight, we are here to answer any additional questions and ask for approval of Council Bill 9 to approve the procurement policy.
Thank you. Are there further questions from Council? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve 11A1, which is Council Bill 9 procurement policy ordinance.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Discussion, Councilmember Berentine.
Um, I appreciate the presentation that you made at study session. I, I regret that it got couched in a, uh, trust issue, that, um, this is, we would go along with these things if we just trust staff, and that's not really our job. We're supposed to, uh, make sure we put policies and procedures into place, and we need to make sure they're followed. And part of the concern, uh, for a good portion of last year and this year already, uh, was not following the procedure. And when you don't follow a procedure, when you have difficulty doing that, somebody comes forward and says, "I think this is gonna change it." Um, I don't think that that was made clear what this was really going to resolve, except for, um, that we're just supposed to trust. If we don't have the ability to follow the procedures, uh, which I think are laid out pretty clearly, I don't think they're confusing. I disagree with that. Um, they were not expeditious, they may not have been easy, um, but they were not confusing. Uh, I don't think that you take that kind of situation and then move it and, um, adrope it up to, from $25,000 to $100,000 without fixing what the, what the real issues were about not following the policies. Um, the biggest one under contention was double this amount, and nothing, this, no enforcement came from it. And so I think we set a very bad precedent with the way that we handle things. We keep putting policies and procedures in place and then don't follow them. So I disagree with this. I, I think $100,000 is absolutely, um, beyond the pale, given the, um, the rather egregious, um, offensive that have happened already. So I would have gone with and stated at the study session that $50,000 doubling it from 25 to 50 and trying to, uh, vet what the real problems were and why it wasn't being followed would have been, um, a better way to go. So I, I can't support this. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I know this was discussed at study session last week, and I was not present, uh, so I wasn't available to air concerns then, and, and that is certainly my own fault that I was not there. Um, but I will do that now. Uh, I share, uh, the concern that going from 25 to 100K, uh, for council approval, it, it, I would like to see it done a bit more incrementally. I certainly think it needs to be raised. I think the 25 is a little too low, and, and I'm not sure that, uh, that that was a functional level anymore. I would have put it at 50. We can come back to this on an annual basis, and so I would have said it at 50 to begin with. But what's actually more concerning to me is the removal of the sealed bid request. Uh, we've now moved that sealed bid request into anything between 50, uh, and $100,000 purchase. Uh, this is certainly me speaking somewhat personally, but, uh, I may be generous to myself, a thrifty person, and I really value shopping around, and I think that we're spending taxpayer dollars, and that something has to get all the way to 50,000 before we put it out to bid is too high for me. It was at 25 prior, I would certainly have kept it there. Uh, I know that that is a more cumbersome process on staff. I believe it was even regarded as inefficient in, in some of the, uh, staff writings that were provided to us, but I, I'm really uncomfortable, uh, moving it all the way to 50,000 before we get a sealed bid. I think that we should, uh, put these things out still at 25. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Portem Russell?
Um, I agree with the things that have already been said. Um, it's, the things that in the past couple of years, that we've been told when changes have been instituted, um, we will follow these, and then they don't get followed. And so, I, I know trust is earned and trust is established. Um, I would like to see this done more incrementally also, um, to make sure that, um, um, staff is, and I'm not saying that it doesn't happen, it's just learning the process. Um, I, um, this council is responsible for the finances of the city and the taxpayers' money, and, um, I believe it's more prudent to do this more incrementally. And, uh, I would like to, um, slow it down a little bit. Um, so I appreciate the work, um, but I think we just need to make sure that the process works before we continue to increase the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from council members? Is there anything in particular you'd like to respond to in some of the conversation, or? No, that's fine if you don't. Okay. Uh, could I have a motion to approve? You already did, sorry. No further comments from any of the others who haven't spoken yet? This is a, a major change. You may want to weigh in, Councilmember Martinez.
I'm supportive of this. I think it makes a lot of sense. We have built in a couple of extra things which I really like, especially as it relates to emergency purchases. Uh, I will be supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Sierra?
I too am in support of the bill tonight to, um, increase the, uh, obviously all aspects of this. Um, I guess just as a, as a comment to Member Questa, since he's uncomfortable with the $100,000, he is comfortable overall with a lot of the portion of this, uh, up to 50,000. Is, is council willing to make a change in terms of moving down from $100,000 to maybe meet in the middle at 75 or 50? Is everybody comfortable with that number, I guess, since Questa did, or since Member Questa did bring up that concern on its side?
Are you making an amendment?
Possibly an amendment, so I guess the question would, council entertain that amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Wink?
I am, I will be voting for this, um, as is. We discussed this, uh, very thoroughly last, at the last meeting last week. Um, I appreciate the, the, the exacting detail that was added to this grid and the, the guiding sort of parameters to our processes and procedures around this. And, and it makes sense. We were, I, I'm very grateful for the work you've done on this and the clarity you've added to these processes through this. So I, I certainly will be approving this as is stated in our documentation tonight.
Councilmember Berentine?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Sierra, I already mentioned that I would be more than happy to go up to the 50,000. Part of the issue was to go ahead, when I asked what this was going to resolve, was that there was confusion. One of the confusions was that the enterprise funds had a $50,000 limit already, and I, um, said we could agree to go ahead and even it out, to go and make everybody at 50,000, would at least, uh, take some of that piece of it out. I'm for doing it somewhat incrementally. None of this process change changes the requirement that if somebody violates this, it, it, our process, our policy and procedure was pretty si- serious about what the consequences were. None of those were ever exacted on all of the, um, indiscretions and failures to follow the policy before. My concern is that we don't, we get ourselves into a position where we don't follow the policy and procedures. So I want to make sure that we've addressed the issues that caused the problem first. I would like to see it go up, but I would like to see it go up a little bit more incrementally so that we can explore and vet the problems before. And again, I hate the fact that this has ever been termed into a fact that voting on this, not voting on this is an issue of showing trust or not trust for the staff. I, I, I find that very difficult to have that presented to us like that, because that's not what it is to me.
Councilmember Sierra?
I was gonna say, just a point of information, um, Member Questa stated up to $50,000, we don't receive quotes. I, well, the way that I understood it, and, and let me know if I misunderstood your statement, but from what I understood from the, uh, packet was that there are quotes up to $50,000. Um, anything over $50,000 goes out to bid, though. A, a formal RFP goes out. Is, am, am I understanding that correctly, or?
Yes, that's correct.
So we still get multiple bids under $50,000, but it's, or multiple quotes, but not a official bid?
Right, right. In the fourth column, you'll see, um, in the bid quote row, two written, two written quotes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Questa?
And that is correct. And, and if I was using any incorrect terminology there, then, then that was certainly me misspeaking. Uh, yes, and it is two written quotes, uh, up to 50,000, and then we get into that sealed bid, um, at 50 up, where currently, I believe it's a sealed bid at 25. Uh, again, with taxpayers' money, I think it's critical that we're as thrifty as possible, and, and maybe that means some extra work, and even the occasional inefficiency. But, um, even 25-plus, it's a big purchase, and, and I think that sealed bid, uh, it, it goes a long way. Um, and I will say, thank you, Councilmember Sierra. I do appreciate even the consideration on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Portem Russell?
Um, Councilmember Questa, I would like to suggest that you make a motion to amend this.
I'm gonna go with my wish list then, and we'll see how palatable this is. I have a feeling maybe not very, but sure.
I haven't weighed in yet.
Pardon me?
I would like to if I could, but, but mind. Yeah, I, I believe that what we have seen here with the policy, uh, chart here is very clear, much clearer than it was before. You can argue that it was clear before, but it wasn't. If people were not following it, we heard that tonight in one of the presenters even. Um, there, we operated for a number of years with, um, not doing this because of the way our lack of understanding the compounding nature of purchases were being made, where we were going over 25%, 25,000 and more, when you went with one vendor on something. And now we've gotten really clear on that, partly because of the tools that we're using that are very public now. Everyone can see what's going on. Um, I, I guess when people can't do the technology of it, I, it does make it difficult. But, um, we have, we see more now, and we have set our standards to accommodate for that. Uh, some of the things that did happen in the last year are now very clear as to how we're supposed to operate with that. We are going to call a special meeting. It was never clear that that was how we would do it before. Um, and city managers in the past, from I9 years on, have, have made purchases on emergency because they were needed and then come to us very quickly afterwards. Um, this is now set that we are going to do something with 24, 48 hours and, and make sure that we decide that, and it's not just in the hands of the city manager anymore. I feel very comfortable with this. I believe that the limits are fit, this city. We are, um, no longer a small town. It may feel like that. I like that it is, but we're sandwiched in big cities with big city numbers that we have to purchase, and I believe this makes us much more efficient and effective. I just want to remind people that this is for things that are already budgeted, or already considered on the budget of things that are needed. We've already approved. Now, I realize you could say up here that some of you didn't approve the budget, um, so I guess you could contest that, uh, but we have approved the budget, and it's streamlining it so that we can move on to more, um, to other kinds of things. Councilmember Berentine? And, yeah, go ahead.
Once the budget is passed, I, I understand, but we don't do a line item, we don't do a line item budget. Where we see the money get spent in the process, how it's getting spent, and whether it's, we're good stewards of that, is as the contracts come forward and as the money is going out. And that's, that's necessary. Otherwise, if we're going to approve and hold to the specifics, then we need to have that information at the time we do the budget. If we're just going to go ahead and go, "Once we approve the money, you can spend it," then we need to have that level of detail at the time of the budget. As it is now, as we go forward in our spending of money, um, then it comes forward to us so that we can make sure that it, we've, we're following a process and that we're being as responsible with the taxpayers' money as possible. So, in, in all fairness, it's not really the case. Plus, money can be moved within the department, it just can't be moved from out of the department. So we already have some leeway that's in there, and when those things happen, we need to make sure that it's coming to council. And I, and I think this is a little, it wasn't, it's been several questions in the last couple of months about following the process for, for bids, and whether we're doing government, we've been asked to even go outside of that. Um, so this is something that's really not kind of resolved itself yet, and I'd like to do it a little bit more incrementally.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and to the point of the budget, and it's an important one. We, we have approved these large sums, but I think that it is more, um, in broad strokes, that this amount of money for this particular department, et cetera. I, I, along that same line, that just because we've approved it in the budget, then we don't really need a cap at all. It's all been approved. And so I, I'm not sure how well that one gives me some comfort. Um, I am going to make a motion to amend here, and, uh, the first component of the amendment would be to keep the, uh, sealed bid component at $25,000. And the second component of the motion, or of the amendment, excuse me, would be to raise or to make, uh, council approval a requirement at $50,000 purchases and up, as opposed to the 25 now. That still puts us in doubling what we're currently doing. Uh, I think that'll give citizens just a little bit more, uh, comfort with the process as well. It's not getting too high too quickly. This can always be revisited, uh, and that would be my amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? A voting of yes on this would be to kee- to have a keep sealed bid at 25,000, and a second would be to raise the approval amount to 50,000, but not higher. So please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let, let the record show, three ayes and four nays. The four nays being Councilmember Sierra, Martinez, Mayor Olson, and Councilmember Wink.
Councilmember Questa?
Uh, nonetheless, I do appreciate the consideration by council on that amendment. Thank you.
Any further conversation? On the 11A1? If not, please vote to approve as it's stated.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, four ayes and three nays. Three nays being Mayor Portem Russell, Councilmember Berentine, and Councilmember Questa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 11B, we have no second readings on ordinances. Uh, 11C1, Roman's Park Tennis and Playground Grant. Staff recommends, uh, city council approve our resolution on Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant. Application at Roman's Park for improvement to the tennis courts and playgrounds here. To present to us is Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Library, Dave Lee.
Good evening, council members. Um, I'm here tonight to ask council to approve a resolution for an Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant. Application at Roman's Park for improvements to the tennis courts and playgrounds. Existing tennis courts are cracked and damaged to the extent that they're not usable currently. The playgrounds have outdated and worn play equipment that is not currently ADA accessible. Our goal in applying for this grant are, one, to replace the asphalt tennis courts that are currently out there with post-tension concrete, making them, uh, upgraded and safer for tennis and USTA compliant. And they will accommodate both children. We will stripe them for children's play as well as adult play. Our second goal is to relocate the existing five-through-12 playground, uh, next to the two-to-five-year-old playground, uh, so that parents and guardians can more closely watch their children. Currently, those two playgrounds are separated by a bathroom, and it makes it very difficult when you have children of multiple ages to, um, watch both sets of kids. Uh, so that- So, that's the second goal. Financially, we're looking at a total of around $700,000. We're requesting $500,000 from Arapahoe County. Our grant match would be $200,000. And we're also in the process of applying for a USTA, United States Tennis Association, grant of $20,000. So, if we're successful, we would have a combined total from two grants of $720,000. Currently, the money that our match will come from is out of open space and out of the grant matching funds account. And currently, there is $406,913 in there. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember questions? Mayor Potem Russell?
What happened to Cushing Park? I thought Cushing Park was on the top of the list.
Cushing Park is on the top of the list, but we don't have enough funds to do anything with that right now. There's a lot more major renovation to the tune of $5 million. We felt when they made this grant available, typically, the maximum is somewhere around $250,000 to $300,000. This year, they're earmarking $2.5 million with a maximum of $500,000 that you can apply for. So, we decided to jump on Romans Park, knowing that the tennis court right now is not usable, and throw in the playgrounds as well because of their datedness and worn-ness.
Absolutely, and I mean, I'm happy Romans Park has needed updating, but I was just curious because I knew that Cushing was on the top of the list. One other question, why has this come forward when the grant application is not finalized for submittal yet? I noticed on the back that there are some pages being...
The grant isn't, yeah, and that's a very good question. The grant currently is not in its completed form. It's due April 12th. We have to also get it in for Arapahoe County Grant Review. That's due at the end of the week. So, what we've done is give you an incomplete grant. My apologies for that, but there's a lot of time constraints because of that.
Okay.
That's why it's not complete.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sierra?
Thank you, Acting Director Lee. Just a clarification, so the total project cost is $700,000?
If we get both grants, everything should total up to $720,000.
And we're asking for $500,000 from Arapahoe County Open Space?
Correct.
And then also another $20,000 from USTA?
Correct.
Now, would the $200,000, if we were also get to the USTA, would our portion get subtracted from the $200,000? So, would it be $180,000 that would come out of?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just needed to understand if we would still have to pay the $200 on top of the, for the $500,000?
No.
Councilmember Berentine?
I thought that there was an intention of saving some of the money into, so that we could get to the point where we had the money for Cushing Park or how, what was the plan for Cushing Park? Because I thought we were going to do some kind of combination of some funding from several years or seasons to try and get to the point where we could start to do some of that.
That's correct. We do have some savings in Open Space Fund for things like Cushing Park, but again, that's going to take a number of years of saving for that. The other thought is if we get a bond or something put to the vote with the people this fall, that we would be able to do a number of major projects, Cushing, Jason, Millerfield, and beyond, if a bond or whatever the citizens vote on for park improvements.
But since it's not a, we would be spending the money that we had originally intended to save to try to, you know, do Cushing Park on the hope that we get the bond so that we don't, so...
No, that's not quite correct. And the reason I can say that is we have an account in Open Space in particular that covers matching funds for grants and that's all we would be spending. There's $406,000 in there now and we would be spending only $200,000 of that. So, we still have the savings for Cushing.
All right. Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lee. The first goal centers around the tennis courts and getting those up to repair. And then the second goal deals directly with the two existing playgrounds. Are those on the same timeline or is, are those done, I guess succinctly, or is it one done, one is done first, tennis courts, and then the goal is to shift the focus to the playgrounds?
We would bid this all out to a general contractor, whether they use a subcontractor to do the tennis courts and/or the playground would be, to be determined, but they would be done all at the same time.
Concurrently then?
Concurrently, yes.
You would see a crew on the tennis courts?
No.
Crew on the...
I mean, there are different expertises, so yes. There would probably be a tennis court or a concrete company out there doing the post-tensioned concrete because you run cables and whatnot through that. Playgrounds are a whole different animal, but they would have workers out there, contractors, doing both projects at the same time.
Okay, very good. And the reason that I raised that is that with the second goal being to relocate the existing five-to-12-year-old play area closer to the two-to-five-year-old play area, which is for caretakers, it does seem like there is kind of child safety there and for the folks watching them. It's ADA, the new playground, it looks like they're using ASTM materials. This is very anecdotal evidence and it's something I probably shouldn't use up here, but at Belby Park near my house, the playgrounds and tennis courts are located directly next to each other.
Correct.
There's typically farm use, of course, at the playgrounds than you get at the tennis courts.
Yes.
So, if one was going to be done prior to the other, it would have seemed to me that maybe the playgrounds could be considered there, but I also thought potentially the USTA grant came into play there also and that they, is that a component as well that they're asking that that project be done in any sort of priority?
At this point, we're still preparing that grant, but again, when you think about the whole project, my preference, and I will push to have this all done at the same time, rather than to close off part of a park and then another park, part of the park. I'd want it done in the three to six months, hopefully that it would take.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mayor.
I do have a question. What do you think the likelihood is of getting this?
It's just a matter of who we're competing against and what their grant requests are for. Again, it was $2.5 million, up to 500,000 entities. I know Littleton, I know South Suburban, I'm sure Aurora will be applying for grants, and I think it was Deer Trail or somebody else was at these grant review processes as well.
Great, thank you.
I'm hopeful.
Yeah, okay. We have some competition, but it's possible.
In the interim, if we are able to secure the $500,000 grant, I would like to take the matching funds and at least do the tennis courts. The tennis courts are estimated at $197,000. So, we have $200,000 in match money and if we're successful in getting the tennis grant as well, we'll have a little bit more. So, my goal is even if we don't get the $500,000, we need to do something with the tennis courts.
Thank you. That was going to be my second question about the tennis courts. If someone gets hurt trying to play on that, which is really pretty bad right now, are we liable?
Right now, there's signage out there that say the tennis courts are closed.
Okay, good, thank you.
If somebody goes out and chooses to play, I think that's a legal question, but I don't, right now, they shouldn't be out there.
I won't press you any further. Thank you. Could I have a motion? Bring this forward.
I move to approve 11C1 Romans Park Tennis and Playground Grant.
A second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say, I'm really excited to see this come forward. I really hope we get this grant funds. It would be really nice to do those improvements at the same time and want to thank you for the council request that gave us all of the grant funds that we have received from Arapahoe County over the time.
You're very welcome.
It's really cool to see that in one big, you know, kind of package, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion? Thank you too for doing this. I know the opportunities, we have to strike when they're there and we might not get it, but at least this could be a big help in getting much more done than just the tennis courts. I appreciate your diligence in getting it done as quick as you can.
And I appreciate council allowing me to bring an incomplete grant before them. I know that kind of is nerve-wracking, but given the time constraints, I do appreciate that consideration.
Thank you. Please.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next is 11C2, the approval of change order with Adolphson &amp; Peterson for police headquarters building modifications. Staff recommends this motion, a change of order in the amount of $811,935.98 for completion of the parking lot perimeter wall and the parking lot canopies. And Public Works Maria DeAndrea and Commander Fender are here again.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just a brief overview, these are two items that we've discussed at study session before. The first one being the completion of the parking lot canopies. So, as I mentioned, the original plan was to include all of them. We went from a parking structure to canopies and in the interest of reserving amounts for contingency, we did install with the, under the guaranteed maximum price with Adolphson &amp; Peterson, just half of the canopies. And now we're coming back. We feel we're at a place where we can install those within the budget and therefore we're requesting money for that additional half. Similarly, we're changing from a chain-link mesh fence around the perimeter of the parking lot to be more of a wall that's impenetrable, so you can, less visual intrusion as well as additional protection just from adjacent public spaces. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. So, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So, even with, if we add these two additional kind of pieces of the project, we will still have $1 million remaining in the project budget. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, could I have someone make a motion to approve 11C2?
I move to approve 11C2, approval of change order with Adolphson &amp; Peterson for police headquarters building modifications.
A second? Either one, Martinez or Wink. Martinez is...
Martinez.
Discussion, Councilmember Berentine?
We're spending the bond premium money. They were taken out. The way that this went forward to the people was a certain design that was going to happen for 27 million. Now, we're just, we're at the 31 million with only a million left of the additional, almost $6 million bond premium in there that should have been used for a lot of other things than just trying to do the original project. I asked last time to get a little bit more of an explanation of why they were taken out and the explanation, answer that I got was they wanted to have contingency money. There is no contingency money left in the original contract. We're using the bond money and I would have liked to have seen that go, all that extra that the citizens, actually, in my opinion, didn't vote for, that we foisted on them for them to have to pay back. And I'm not, I'm not going to be able to vote for this.
Further comments from council members? Mayor Potem Russell?
I too am concerned about taking it out and then putting it back in as a change order. I do believe that bond premium, I don't agree that we should be spending it for these things and so I will not be supporting this either.
Any further comments? Councilmember Berentine, is there something new?
No, yes. The additional monies, like what was requested in the council request for things that I think would be helpful and may save some police officers' lives, like body cams, just kind of got dismissed and I really would like this council to have, be a little bit more thoughtful in vetting the last million dollars that we have of this, almost $6 million, and not just doing it on things that we're already taking out of the project, but just for future consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine, you've mentioned that a couple of times. Would you like that to be on a study session at some point?
Yes, especially with the answer that we got. I believe that it needs to be vetted a little bit more. I want our men and women safe as well as our community.
Would others as well want that on study session?
Yes. I was a little bit disappointed in the council request, how it was answered. It was just one vendor that came forward and so I would like to have it talked about at a study session.
Councilmember Questa?
Yeah, I'll agree to that. I think it wouldn't hurt. It is a great deal of money. The citizens are footing the bill on this and I do think that they voted to support. I think they're tremendously supportive of the police department, our first responders, but I think having a longer conversation, if there are citizens who really want to know more of the nuance of it, it might not hurt.
Thank you. I've received a couple of calls on this, so I would like to see a little bit more of a conversation where we hear some of the pros and cons so that we have a better idea of what your decision-making process was for that. Any one else want to weigh in on that? Seems like we have enough to bring it forward. All right, and so back to the motion at hand. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, five ayes and two nays. The two nays being Mayor Potem Russell and Councilmember Berentine.
Great. The next item is 11C3, is that right? Yes. Citizen of the Year Decision. Staff recommends city council approve by motion the selection of William, known as Bill Clayton Jr. as the 2019 Citizen of the Year in order to move forward with planning the celebration, which is scheduled for May 13th, 2019. Our interim city manager Dorothy Hargrove is here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Any questions that I could verify for you?
Councilmember Berentine?
Who got to tell them or did the crew already get to them?
I think the word is out, for sure.
So, the mayor didn't have an opportunity or you didn't have an opportunity to make the phone call?
No. We explained to him when he asked that the official vote would come tonight and that the official notification would come out.
I guess then the mayor will officially notify him after the official vote.
The mayor will be calling him personally and congratulating him, but we do know that he knows.
Thank you very much.
Through a number of channels. All right. Could I have a motion to approve?
I move, I move to approve 11C3, Bill Clayton for Citizen of the Year.
A second.
All right. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you, and we'll begin preparing the celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I would like to have us take a bit of a break and then come back in here for Agenda item 12. Would that be okay with everyone? If we took like a five-minute, works for me, bio break? All right. We'll take a five-minute break, stretch or whatever is needed. We'll take a five-minute break, stretch or whatever is needed.
Stephanie, hello. I haven't said hi yet. How are you? Good. Not too bad.
I was on a nice walk yesterday with my daughter and my dad.
Very good.
We always like to go out.
Sure. It's almost out of nowhere. It's starting to get just a little green on our lawn. I see those initial sprays. Trust me, that jumped out of my eye. I thought there was going to be a challenge to drink the water. I was going to take it. I was, I was, I was going to drink that water.
As a woman, I never drink anything.
Well, smart, smart.
At a young age, unfortunately, it's hard to know what it is.
I guess I'm the foolish guy that says, yeah, sure.
Hey, that's me, right? It's going to be me in a few years, and Nico's starting to do all his.
Sure. Even bike riders, like on the way to work, you know, like early bike riders that I assume are heading to work, so. No kidding, cabin fever, because this is the time of year where I can do. For me, on the calendar, it's St. Patrick's Day, and then usually it's spring training starts. Just these little things that mentally. Do they? They're good.
Of all the Colorado teams, and I guess they're my favorite, and I think I'm going to. Yeah, it just takes a while, very personal.
This is the season I've ever had in my life, right there. In my life. It might not happen again. This might be, yeah, this might be it.
I think, I don't even think.
I'm trying to enjoy myself. This might be the best, this might be the best.
But he just gives it like a different name. He was like, it's not Tim Dad. Likes art, he loves music. He likes it, he's enjoying it. He does like the school, but it's funny that it's the very first.
If the council could be seated, we'll start. Our next agenda item is twelve, general discussion in first is, oh, sorry, I thought, I thought he was already seated. We will wait a little bit longer for Member Questa. I saw that black shirt over there, and I thought that was his suit. Now we're all here. Agenda twelve, general discussion, mayor's choice. Twelve A one is an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal information and advice on specific legal matters pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, Pairs four, Pairs B, including review of matters associated with active or threatened litigation. I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal information and advice on specific legal matters pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B, including review of matters associated with active or threatened litigation, to include Mayor Linda Olson, Mayor Proton Rita Russell, and council members Lorette Berantyne, Dave Questa, Amy Martinez, Othonia Sierra, and Cheryl Wink, and city attorney Allison McKinney Brown, and interim city manager Dorothy Hargrove. Can I ask for a second? Please vote. Councilmember Questa has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Brown, can you be any more specific in the potential or active litigation that we're going back to discuss?
Yes. I should be updating you at least annually about what active litigation that we have going on that's attorney-client privileged, and I think it's critical information for you to have going into the budgeting cycle.
Thank you. But the specific cases, are you a liberty to shed any light there?
Yeah, I'm going to review with you all active litigation cases that we are currently in court on, and... Are you wanting me to pull up all the names of all of our cases?
How many are there?
We have four in state and federal court. I'm not sure that was clearly heard. Could you use the mic a little stronger? That's right. I have a cold as well. We have four in state and federal court that are active, and then we have a couple of pending. So I really think it's important to, to give you an overview of that at this time. I'm hoping that you guys are interested in hearing about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Attorney Brown.
Okay, Councilmember Berantyne.
In lieu of what you just said, then I have a question about the active or threatened litigation. All of what we will be discussing in there has already been filed?
I'm going to share with you the information that's attorney-client privileged, and I wrote that exactly the way it is. We have four cases in state and federal court, and any threatened litigation that I, that I have to share with you, I'd like to do so.
And by, and what is, what qualifies something as threatened litigation? Is there some documentation for that, or just the feel for it, or?
In some cases, there's documentation. We get a notice tonight. That's what I want to discuss with you.
So everything's been noticed, or is in court? I'm just trying to get a better definition of threatened, that it's, there's some documentation.
As your attorney, if I feel that there's information that I can't reveal publicly, but you need to know about as a decision-making body, I want to make you aware of that. So I'm hopeful that that's information that you are interested in hearing as well, especially going into the budgeting cycle. Thank you. Mayor Proton Russell?
So the, the phrase, receiving legal information, advice on specific legal matters pursuant to that, does that involve those cases that you just quoted, or is that other things?
No, that's the language specifically straight out of statute, and councilman Quest was wanting, if we can, to narrow that down and make it more specific. So I added the including review of matters associated with active or threatened litigation to further define the language that's provided by statute.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm going to weigh in a bit on this. I have never been so in the dark about our litigation than, than this last year, two years. We have always had executive sessions where we are briefed on a number of things, and I'm, I really hope that we will take this opportunity, because it does impact our budget and how we go about making sure that our city and our citizens are all safe with the litigation and also oversight of legal matters. So, Councilmember Martinez.
I was going to echo the same sentiments. We have, our city attorney has been asking to meet with us, to update us on litigation for some time now, and I feel it's in our best interest to do so and be in the loop about what's going on. I agree, we haven't really had any of these updates in the last two years, and it makes me feel uncomfortable. So I think it's, we really need to know what's going on. So I think we need to go into this executive session. It will be very important to do so.
Councilmember Berantyne.
I know that the city attorney wants to do it a little differently, but we used to get a fairly regular update every month on what litigation was going on. It was confidential documentation, and it kept us abreast of what was going on. The city attorney has made a decision that that's not something that we're getting. So I don't have a problem with reviewing the cases that are already in. I just have a problem with the threatened litigation, which I think kind of opens it up to an interpretation that starts to get into policy and trying to circumvent, advocating for circumventing things through policy or interpretation of the law or our ordinances that I have a concern about. At least that's what I've seen happen when I protested the meetings before. So that's the issue I bring it up.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, and I'll make it brief. I certainly appreciate the information that you're looking to get to us, City Attorney Brown. And to me, it is that it does tie in with budget, and this is where it becomes a far more public issue, that these could have impacts to budget that we've already approved. And there are citizens that are really mindful of budget and how we're allocating money. And so that's where it gets tough to me, where we've now raised that there could be something out there that's impacting the budget, and you get the number four. There's four of them, and then some threats. And I think that that's where it's tough, and that it's vague for citizens to know what the city could be staring down there. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the report from our city attorney, and I trust that when she proposes something for executive session, there's reason behind it, whether she provides us a packet of confidential information or presents it to us. And then executive session, I don't see how that's circumventing any part of the law. She's sharing that information with us, so I'm happy to go to executive session.
Thank you. Any further comments? Please vote to go into session or not.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, four ayes and three nays, the three nays being Mayor Proton Russell, Councilmember Berantyne, and Councilmember Questa.
Moving on to eleven, I mean twelve A one, actually, I, I think I need to, Councilmember Questa, do you have your line on?
You bet. Can we still discuss this subject? It sounds like you were going to make a comment on it.
Yes, we can. I was going to, I think we can, can't we not? Yes. Yeah.
Well, it has been stated in the past, packets have just been issued to council members. Is that not an option? Was that not something that was conducted in the past?
I don't know how things were done in the past. I'm not sure what the difference is between a confidential written document and a confidential meeting where you're able to ask questions and have those answered. The fact is, it's confidential and not open to the public because it's attorney-client privileged. You're feeling the difference between that, but legally, it's the exact same thing. So if I put it in writing, I, I can, I guess we could have that stuff hand-delivered to your home, and then you could call me one by one and ask your questions about that, which I think circumnavigates the fact that you are city council members only when you sit as a body. If you're not sitting as a convened body, you don't have, you don't have the same legal authority. So I'm much more comfortable giving attorney-client legal advice to my actual client, and my client is the seven of you as a body. If, we've never had that discussion, I mean, never, and I've been trying to have this discussion with you. If as a body, you say that you would rather receive attorney-client privileged information in documents, and that those can be handed out to you in your individual capacity, and you will be careful not to share those with people, that's your call. I'm just more comfortable talking to my council. And this is the first time I've ever worked with a council that has been so against visiting with me about what's going on. I deal with a lot of matters that I think you need to be a part of, and I would really like to share that information with you. If there's information about the budget, that comes out in the budget, it comes out in the budget. But one of the issues that we've run into is you ask questions that are attorney-client privileged in an open meeting, and I can't answer those, which means that when, when budgeting issues come up, you don't have the background and information to understand where a request might come from, or what choices are made. It's kind of a long answer, but I'm not quite sure how, I'm not, I'm not sure what the difference is between a floating document that's attorney-client privileged in meeting with you as a body. Councilmember Questa, did you have more?
You bet. I do. And it's the difference between a group, and we're having a group discussion back there. And I've had citizens express a lot of discomfort with that, and what conversations are happening behind closed doors. You're saying if it's, it's important enough that it could impact our budget, and that you need to speak with us about it. And I think that that's where people do have this growing concern of what is happening behind the scenes with the city that they're not aware of, that could have this impact on the budget. And we, we get to go back there and say, well, don't worry, we're smart enough to handle this. We got this all worked out. And another component to me, if it is of such great importance, I would be gone eighteen months, two years without having that discussion.
I don't know. I've been asking. I don't know how we're going this long. I'm, I'm making, I make, I have to make the decisions, and I'd rather make them with input of my client than alone. Councilmember Berantyne.
I can answer that question as well. When the document comes out, and it's written, it's about the updates on what's going on with the court and potential outcomes of what's going on with court cases, it doesn't stray in the conversation. I have unfortunately had to protest several of the executive sessions, one for discussing an elected official blatant against the executive session rules, and this body continued to have that meeting, and the attorney did not stop it either. I protested the last one because I believed that it was more about policy. And I think when we start to talk about the threatened litigation, that we start to get into opinions about how to maneuver to avoid having litigation, and that should be discussed because, out in open, because that's a policy decision, not trying to interpret ordinance of the law in a way to circumvent something that you believe or think or might happen, it gets off track. So I would agree with Councilmember Questa, when it's in writing, that part doesn't happen. We don't stray off the topic because the topic's written. And I've never seen an update given on, a legal update given on, I think we're going to maybe have legal stuff if, if you allow this business to go through, or stuff. All of that has had to happen in open session for several issues, and I think we were the battle for it.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I am extremely disturbed that this council cannot agree to talk with our city attorney. It's really important. She's asked several times for us to be filled in on these matters, and I agree, I don't want her making these decisions without our input. They're probably really important things. Otherwise, she would... Otherwise, she wouldn't even ask us to do this. I'm also very uncomfortable with the written update. I think it's too easily shared with other people or get in the wrong hands of people. And it's extremely inefficient where maybe three of us have the same question. Three of us call her and ask? That's ridiculous. We should just sit and have a discussion and ask our questions together, so we all have the same information at the same time. I'm really frustrated by this, and I'm sorry, I really would like to go into executive session. So I'm just really frustrated and don't want to deal with it on paper, one-on-one. That seems ridiculous.
Councilmember Questa.
I am surprised that Councilmember Martinez finds this look for transparency so disturbing, that that is disturbing to you, that we want to provide more information to citizens, and that you think that councilmembers can't be trusted with a piece of paper. I think they can. I have that faith in my fellow councilmembers up here. I would ask you this, City Attorney Brown, are these cases public? I would assume they are, unless they're sealed.
Yeah, four active cases are public. The decisions that are being made are not public. And we don't publicize attorney-client decision-making because there's somebody on the other side who wants that information and wants to use it against the city. And if they use it against the city correctly, then the city is harmed. And so that's why I'm very cautious. My fiduciary interest to the city and as your city attorney, I'm very cautious about protecting information that could harm the city. However, if you can get four members of council to waive that attorney-client protection and tell me that what they'd rather have is a piece of paper with that information, and I can send it out and then just talk to you one-on-one, in that way, I know what each one of you are thinking, but you can't advise me one-on-one, or you can't give me any kind of input in your thoughts on anything one-on-one. So I appreciate the incredible trust you're placing in me. I would rather be working with you, but I do appreciate the trust that all of you have in me to do this.
Is it four or five? Four members could approve to go to paper?
Four members, yeah. The only time we need five votes is to go into executive session. Other than that, it's just a majority.
Councilmember Barrington.
I don't, I don't have a problem with going in about the active cases, and I think I've made that clear. The last time we went into executive session was my understanding that what was happening was going to be communicated to the citizens. There was no reason for it not to be communicated to them, both to alleviate some of their fear and to explain why some policy changes happen. It has yet to happen. So I again am res- hesitant to go into executive session and discuss the public's business behind closed doors when I have too many examples of it not being handled, in my opinion, correctly. I have no problem going in on the active cases. I have a problem going in on the threatened litigation because that opens it up again to policy, and I've already stated why. So if you want to bring it to the active cases, then I'd be more than happy to go into executive session. Otherwise, I'm not comfortable.
City Attorney, is it possible for us to make a motion to simply do the active cases tonight?
You can do whatever you'd like. You have the authority.
All right. I would like to see us make a motion to review the active cases, at least to get that far in getting some information. And here's my reasoning. I don't believe this is an issue of transparency, but it's fine, we can have differences on that. This is being informed. There were, in the past attorney that we had, city attorney, we received both confidential packets and regular meetings with him. It was, we knew a lot. I almost always, when I read the packet, called him up to ask him about it because I didn't understand them. And I did not ever feel comfortable doing that because then it was privileged conversation between the two of us, and we couldn't have a conversation with everyone else. I think that's poor practice on our part not to be taking very seriously the legal parts of our city. We are responsible for the budget, but we seem to have just totally put aside some of our legal responsibilities. So tonight, I would like to ask that we at least can go forward with the purpose of receiving legal information on specific legal matters pursuant to the four cases that are actively in place. That would be my motion. Would there be a second? All second? Any discussion about that? Councilmember Questa.
If there's only four cases, can you please provide them in their public? Please.
I don't have citations. There is a Homeowners Association versus Inglewood case, there is Livingston versus Inglewood case, there's a Phobec versus Inglewood case, and there's a Par versus Inglewood case. They're all active.
I'll check the tape, too. Thank you.
Could you repeat them, please?
There's a Homeowners Association versus Inglewood, Livingston versus Inglewood, Phobec versus Inglewood, and Par versus Inglewood.
I would really appreciate it if I could just hear the four cases. If you're going to say them, if you could just speak into the mic, I'm just trying to write it down.
A Homeowners Association versus Inglewood, Livingston versus Inglewood, Phobec versus Inglewood, and Par versus Inglewood.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, vote would be going into the study, or an executive session. Would I have to read this whole thing? This would be moving into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal information and advice on specific legal matters. Is it, yeah, pursuant to C.R.S. section 24-6-4024B, including review matters of the four cases which the city attorney just announced. And those included in this meeting would be Mayor Linda Olson, Mayor Protem Rita Russell, and councilmembers Lorette Barrington, Dave Questa, Amy Martinez, Othonia Sierra, and Cheryl Wink, and city attorney Allison McKinney-Brown, and interim city manager Dorothy Grof. And we had a second, and it was, who was it? Councilmember Martinez. So, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Questa.
All right, thank you. We will dismiss to the next room, correct? And we will resume there, and I'll read the next session. City Clerk, do you need this in there? I'll leave it here.
The time is now nine fifty-one and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Linda Olson, Mayor Pro Tem Rita Russell, Council members Othani Elsierra, Rhett Berentine, Dave Cuesta, Amy Martinez, Cheryl Wink, City Attorney Allison McKinney Brown, Interim City Manager Dorothy Hargrove. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is actually council members' choice, and I will come back to mayor's choice after that, but I need a few minutes just to add a few things. So, who would like to kick off tonight for council members' choice?
I can do it.
Councilmember Sierra.
So, just a couple of items. One, can I put in a council request regarding ballot issue at the police department? I know we keep going back and forth regarding what was on the ballot issue itself. I recall it stating when we had that study session back in, late in two thousand and eighteen, that there was a repayment of not exceed, it was in the high forties, forty million, somewhere around there. So, can I get that language just to understand exactly what was on the ballot measure? Because I do recall that being a study session conversation. And then also, I met with the friends of Inglewood Parks on Saturday. They had their monthly meeting and they are very anxious to see what type of funding proposals we would consider to obviously improve the park. So, any information on that would be helpful. I do plan on having a conversation with Maria Sabata later on in the week regarding that and also some other budget issues, but nothing else for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Would you go next?
Sure. I was also going to ask about funding for the parks. I don't know if it's most appropriate for a study session first, or...
If I may, the April twenty-second council study session, we're scheduled to talk about capital projects with that particular topic in mind. So, definitely it's a study session. Thank you.
And then I just had one other council request that I want to kind of add on to what the Mayor Pro Tem asked after a public comment. And if it was already in there, I apologize, but to kind of just tell us the step-by-step process for food truck licensing, what it currently is. Yeah. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Russell.
The, just an update, Simon Center is having some problems. I think the water issues that are going on over there, I was able to get information from them about the product that they are using, and so I'm very thankful for that. I told them I appreciated that. Apparently, Simon Center was without hot water over the weekend and we're still experiencing some problems today. I did call over to Lindsay Hawking and ask her, I left a message for her to let me know when that hot water situation would be resolved. And Jim, I believe his name is Jim, he's the maintenance guy. He did call and I talked to him. He was over to the Simon Center several times on Saturday, several times on Sunday, and I mean, he would heat it up just long enough, so a few people probably got a shower. But then he called somebody in today and it is fixed now, so I am thankful for that because I got a few calls and so. It seems like there was something. The food truck, I appreciate you bringing forward the process for that. And so, the, when I was there on Saturday, they have designed their fence so the food truck could park in the back. And really, it seems to me like the food truck itself would be the fence because the opening would be towards their in, inside area. So, I really would like for us to look at how we could help them out without having, right now, the city wants them to build a fence, which I think would make, make things not only worse for them, but for the neighborhood. Because, you know, things, people hide behind fences and things like that. So, I would like to help them out and they, they came to the ACE Committee and just talked about the process. They were very open, they didn't have an attitude. I think that young people like them would be very helpful to the city to work together and to develop a process that is much more user-friendly. And so, I think that's a great idea about, you know, reaching out to food trucks. So, I would like for us to, you know, address those issues. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't repeat what three members have already said, so I'm going to pass for now. Appreciating what my fellow colleagues have mentioned and in support of that.
Councilmember Berentine?
I want to, the notice that I sent this afternoon, I wanted to make sure that, I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see it, but I will be attending the meeting, the town hall meeting tomorrow. And I think Councilmember Sierra has done a beautiful job of trying to reach out to the community, like I said in the email. There has been a lot of confusion on what this meeting is about, and I have had numerous calls about what is the, why are we having a meeting on paving the alleys? When did this come up? And I go, that isn't it. I encourage people to talk to Councilmember Sierra, but when I found out today that it was not going to be recorded, that it wasn't going to be documented, then I thought, I need, I need to attend after the conversations. People, not everybody can attend the meeting, so I appreciate that you're having the meeting and I'm sorry that Next Door has yet another victim of too much talking and people getting off track of what your stated purpose was. It says on there what the meeting's for, but it's understandable they get carried away. The, and I did give that to all of council and to the city manager as well to notify. If anybody else is attending that would push it over the three, I would suggest that you let them know, but that's why I wanted to make sure that I notified you. The barn house tap, I do appreciate the food truck issue. They designed that with the city information to go ahead and have that in the back, and then for the zoning thing to come up after the fact is a little disconcerting. I went down and talked to some of the people downtown and they're not having food trucks when they were able to before, whether we gave them a grace period while we were building the crosswalk, I don't know, but they've all been chased off and I'm hearing some problems from not just barn house, but from downtown as well, that they're having a hard time. So, we need to visit that, both for the zoning and for the process as well. I would like to see them stay off of Broadway. I, I think that can be kind of dangerous, especially when they've designed an area to have it in back. The council request that I did, that came back said, there's no signs for Washington. That wasn't what I asked, it was twofold. There was a sign advertising an Airbnb on Floyd and Logan where the old shrine property was.
The time is now 9:51 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Linda Olson, Mayor Pro Tem Rita Russell, Council members Othani Elsierra, Rhett Berentine, Dave Questa, Amy Martinez, Cheryl Wink, City Attorney Allison McKinney Brown, interim City Manager Dorothy Hargrove. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is, actually, council members' choice, and I will come back to Mayor's choice after that, but I need a few minutes just to add a few things. So, who would like to kick off tonight for council members' choice? Councilmember Sierra.
So, just a couple of items. One, can I put in a council request regarding ballot issue of the police department? I know we keep going back and forth regarding what was on the ballot issue itself. I recall it stating when we had that study session back in, late in 2018, that there was a repayment of not exceed, it was in the high 40s, 40 million, somewhere around there. So, can I get that language, just to understand exactly what was on the ballot measure? Because I do recall that being a study session conversation. And then also, I met with the friends of Inglewood's Parks on Saturday. They had their monthly meeting, and they are very anxious to see what type of funding proposals we would consider to obviously improve the park. So, any information on that would be helpful. I do plan on having a conversation with Maria Sabata later on in the week regarding that, and also some other budget issues. But, nothing else for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, would you go next?
Sure. I was also going to ask about funding for the parks. I don't know if it's most appropriate for a study session first, or...
If I may, the April 22 council study session, we're scheduled to talk about capital projects with that particular topic in mind. So, definitely, it's a study session. Thank you.
And then, I just had one other council request that I want to kind of add on to what the Mayor Pro Tem asked after a public comment. And if it was already in there, I apologize, but to kind of just tell us the step-by-step process for food truck licensing, what it currently is. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Russell.
The, just an update, Simon Center is having some problems. I think the water issues that are going on over there, I was able to get information from them about the product that they are using, and so I'm very thankful for that. I told them I appreciated that. Apparently, Simon Center was without hot water over the weekend, and we're still experiencing some problems today. I did call over to Lindsay Hawking and ask her, I left a message for her to let me know when that hot water situation would be resolved. And Jim, I believe his name is Jim, he's the maintenance guy. He did call, and I talked to him. He was over to the Simon Center several times on Saturday, several times on Sunday, and I mean, he would heat it up just long enough, so a few people probably got a shower. But then, he called somebody in today, and it is fixed now. So, I am thankful for that, because I got a few calls, and so, it seems like there was something. The food truck, I appreciate you bringing forward the process for that. And so, the, when I was there on Saturday, they have designed their fence so the food truck could park in the back. And really, it seems to me like the food truck itself would be the fence, because the opening would be towards their inside area. So, I really would like for us to look at how we could help them out without having, right now, the city wants them to build a fence, which I think would make things not only worse for them, but for the neighborhood. Because, you know, things, people hide behind fences and things like that. So, I would like to help them out, and they came to the ACE Committee and just talked about the process. They were very open, they didn't have an attitude. I think that young people like them would be very helpful to the city to work together and to develop a process that is much more user-friendly. And so, I think that's a great idea about, you know, reaching out to food trucks. So, I would like for us to, you know, address those issues. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I won't repeat what three members have already said, so I'm going to pass for now. Appreciating what my fellow colleagues have mentioned and in support of that.
Councilmember Berentine.
I want to, the notice that I sent this afternoon, I wanted to make sure that, I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see it, but I will be attending the meeting, the town hall meeting tomorrow. And I think Councilmember Sierra has done a beautiful job of trying to reach out to the community, like I said in the email. There has been a lot of confusion on what this meeting is about, and I have had numerous calls about what is the, why are we having a meeting on paving the alleys? When did this come up? And I go, that isn't it. I encourage people to talk to Councilmember Sierra, but when I found out today that it was not going to be recorded, that it wasn't going to be documented, then I thought, I need to attend after the conversations. People, not everybody can attend the meeting, so I appreciate that you're having the meeting, and I'm sorry that Nextdoor has yet another victim of too much talking and people getting off track of what your stated purpose was. It says on there what the meeting's for, but it's understandable, they get carried away. The, and I did give that to all of council and to the city manager as well to notify. If anybody else is attending that would push it over the three, I would suggest that you let them know, but that's why I wanted to make sure that I notified you. The barnhouse tap, I do appreciate the food truck issue. They designed that with the city information to go ahead and have that in the back, and then for the zoning thing to come up after the fact is a little disconcerting. I went down and talked to some of the people downtown, and they're not having food trucks when they were able to before, whether we gave them a grace period while we were building the crosswalk, I don't know, but they've all been chased off, and I'm hearing some problems from not just barnhouse, but from downtown as well, that they're having a hard time. So, we need to visit that, both for the zoning and for the process as well. I would like to see them stay off of Broadway. I think that can be kind of dangerous, especially when they've designed an area to have it in back. The council request that I did, that came back, said, there's no signs for Washington. That wasn't what I asked, it was twofold. There was a sign advertising an Airbnb on Floyd and Logan where the old shrine property was. Secondly, there is advertisement going on for the Washington property, that we were told that if we let them know that Airbnbs are not legal, that that advertising would be taken down for the traveling nurses, or at least some of the advertising that they're doing. And again, another video went out, and we seem, to Councilmember Questa's point, we seem castrated in order to go ahead and enforce our laws. We have visitor accommodation law, we have boarding house rules, and we have bed and breakfast rules, and none of them allow it in a, in a single-family and an R1C area. So, if all somebody has to do is rename a boarding house and call it something QT, and they can get away with that, they'll just rename Airbnb if we don't do it, and what she's going through is absolutely ridiculous. The attitude that just because people are breaking the law, we auto-accommodate it is So, we need to find a way to take the advertising sign off of there, and if they'll get the right address, then they'll see the sign. Although, during the mayor-manager meeting, I heard the mayor bring that property up as well, which is what I brought up during my council request. So, if they could, now that she's mentioned that again, maybe we could get that done. For the council request at the mayor-manager meeting, the conversation that ended up having, ended up between the mayor and the city manager, ended up talking everybody out of doing my council requests, and I was a little dumbfounded by that. I asked for the emergency operating procedure documents, and when they were adopted by the council. It was my understanding that we had a grant to go ahead and write it in either 2014 or 15, and that it had been submitted, but I don't know whether we ever approved it, whether it ever got approved. In any case, it is irresponsible for us to continue to make it public that somehow we didn't have people designated to do the position of emergency management in those situations. We had two people, Tim Engler and Laura Herblin, our fire marshal. In the emergency, in the ordinance 51, series 2017, Council Bill 50, which is the emergency planning and preparedness, that's part of the adoption of the fire code that we are obligated to do with, in our contract with Denver. It requires businesses to have a plan, to have somebody designated in their building to go ahead and act as that, as that position. I would at least want to know who it is for this building, that we don't require businesses to adhere to a law that we've passed, and we don't pass it ourselves. Written emergency evacuation procedures should be made and kept on the premises. These are the, these are what we expect from the people who do business in this community, but we don't seem to have it available. During that mayor-manager meeting, I heard the city manager say, well, I don't think we, I don't think we have it, or it was really old, or I really think that we put ourselves at a lot of risk to continually make it public that we neither had anybody designated as the emergency manager, nor did we have a plan. And I believe we did. I would like to see that, and I would like to know when council adopted it. In this, that we require of our businesses is all personnel responsible for facility maintenance, fire safety, emergencies, procedures, evacuation plans, evacuation drills, employee training and response procedures, hazard communication, resident training, tenant identification, emergency response, team formulation and training hazardous material, hazardous material inventory, shall complete a training course and have a current certification. When I had talked last summer to our then-city manager Eric Keck, it was my understanding, we only had one person certified here, and that was our fire marshal. So, I would like us to stop playing around with the wordsmithing of this, and I was very upset when I listened to the mayor-manager meeting, and it just gets, how we're going to have a meeting, she can ask her questions, that I'm very specific about what I want. I want the EOP plan, I want any grants that we receive to write it, and I want to know where either the draft is or the EOP, and when it was adopted by council. Was there any other questions about my council request?
My only request of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem is that we answer all of these questions thoroughly in a study session, so that all council would get it. We're trying to gather the information. I don't know the answers to these questions, but I have a committee of directors who are working on it, and we'll present that within three weeks, I think. And I will be glad to, you know, go ahead and write what I have, but I, and give the information that we know, but I'd like to give a very complete rundown and answer these very legitimate questions.
I understand what happened during the mayor-manager meeting, and you said you have a committee of people that are writing up a plan now. We had a plan...
No, we are, we are investigating where we've been, what plans we have, and what the implementation of them has been.
I would like the plan that was written with this grant...
Understood.
And we had a plan when I was on council before. We have not left the city. Haven't just been willy-nilly, sticking our head in the sand, like this city didn't have an emergency plan and people designated to go ahead and implement it. I want that to be acknowledged. I want to see that documentation, because I know it exists.
I would like to ask all of council to weigh in on this, just very quickly. If there is a document that you can produce to that level, do you think you have that document, interim city manager?
I'm not sure that we do.
Okay. That's helpful to know.
But I can look.
If this is a priority for all of us to have it within the next few days, within city councils, sort of, I guess, what you upload on Thursday, if everyone wants it and it's demanding, I think we can, we can do it. Otherwise, I think we need to step back and let us have her, work with her team to get it to us within the next three weeks. That seems more reasonable to me, having one person ask for it. We need to have more than one saying that you want it, like immediately. Could I hear from others? Councilmember Wink.
I do not need to have this information in the next couple of days. I believe in your process, and I know we'll get it in due time, so I would like to allow the city manager and her team to get this to us in the time they've allotted.
Councilmember Martinez.
I would prefer the more thorough information, so I don't, for me, I don't need it in the next three days. I would prefer to wait until we have it fully fleshed out.
Any others who want it within this week, other than what she can put her fingers on easily? Councilmember Sierra.
If it's going to take a few weeks, then I'll wait the few weeks for it.
Anybody else? Councilmember Questa.
Councilmember Wink, is, within the three days, is there something they do have coming up that it would...
I've been asking for this for several months. This council request was a repeat, again, of the documentation that city manager Keck claimed, gave a presentation on and claimed we had, claimed we had an emergency plan, and that it was implemented during the period of time, and to come back and say, don't know what you're talking about, is getting a little frustrating for my constituency.
Understood, and clearly a reasonable request. I think this is a, it's a critical document, and it's one that probably is better done thoroughly. If we're going to have this out there, I'm sure there's a lot of folks that are going to read it. So, I prefer something that's, with the urgency that we can muster, is comprehensive and complete.
Right. Mayor Pro Tem.
I too think it's a critical document. I believe that there have been constituents coming forward and concerned about the emergency operating plan, and spring is coming, and they're concerned about the rain, and I think it would behoove us to find this information as quickly as possible.
Right. I'm fine with us getting it within the next three weeks to the best of your ability, and if you can find anything that would suggest what Eric Keck was talking about, perhaps send it along.
I'll follow up accordingly.
Thank you.
At minimum, again, I would like for us to at least have the documentation that we're expecting from businesses, at least for this building, so that our employees are safe, that this building is safe, and that we're following the law that we implemented this ordinance. On August 20 of 2019, we had a meeting with no material presented. We all agreed that there needed to be a better plan. There was an agreement that there was a plan at that time, and we have continued now to kind of go backwards to where we don't even believe there is one, and we have spring coming up, like the Mayor Pro Tem said, and we're, we're coming dangerously close to just continually publicly admitting that we have a plan and nobody in place to implement it, and I think that's dangerous. So, I know we're going to move on this quickly, but I would, to go ahead and how we're going to adjust or move forward, I don't know how we're going to adjust anything when we continually, we don't have a current plan, but yeah, I'm just, I'm about, founded that we haven't, we just have not, from August 20, and we have not moved forward on this.
Councilmember Berentine, it's very clear that you're upset about this. You've made your case. Could we please move on to the next item that you may have?
Oh, and school, and I apologize, you're right, I am very upset about it, and thank you for acknowledging that, and I will move on. The school requested, and I brought that up after the meeting, the school requested that we do something to shore up our relation, their relationship with our police department, their relationship issues regarding response, feeling kind of validated when they call, and then the reporting process that's caused some issues, that this council needs to address that. And I'd like to see that come forward, so we've already had, what was it, last month? So, I would like to see that happen sooner than later. I don't want school to be out, and then we just end up forgetting about it again. We're very upset, they were very concerned, and we respect it enough to address it in a timely manner. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Questa.
Excuse me, could I ask for clarification from Councilmember Berentine? The schools, when, at that meeting, said, they were indicated that they would send us more information. I certainly have talked to the police about this, but I wasn't sure whether I should be waiting. I'd like some guidance from you and Councilmember Martinez about how best to address it.
I would like for you to follow up and get the information that you need from them, because that was, that was a heart-wrenching meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
It was very difficult, so I'd like it to get vetted and move on as quickly as possible.
So, I'll follow up with them directly?
I followed up with them also, and haven't heard back on that, so.
I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to touch on 4661 Washington, is it, I feel it's an ongoing problem we have remedies for that maybe we're not taking. One of the areas that the water got muddied is this Airbnb approach that we have uncertainty in our Airbnb codes, and what can people get away with in short-term rental. I think that is, can be made an entirely separate matter, as I imagine that's going to take us a long time to sort out. I believe that there is evidence online that the owner of this house has posted right now that this is, it's an apartment complex, essentially. If you look at this property, they're running three separate different units, they're all available month-to-month, and they're being marketed specifically to traveling nurses. My understanding is most of the traveling nurses do at least a quarter to six months in any given shift for a hospital. It is clearly that they're operating this out for more than 29 days, which is the cap on that short-term rental. I can certainly stay there. There's availability right now. I can stay there six months if I wanted to, and then would just give him the rent to do so. So, I believe this is clearly an apartment unit in R1C that is operating right in front of us. And the reason that this is so concerning to me is not only that we just seem to have our hands tied when they aren't, it's even more so that as neighborhood gets denser and denser, in the metro area, I think people are looking for ways to cash in on rental properties, and we're opening the door to allow folks to essentially run an apartment unit in an R1C in our residential neighborhoods. And again, I think it's very unfair to Ms. Williams, I think this has the potential to become more of a trend, that if we don't say, this is not allowed here, and I believe clearly in violation of Inglewood's codes, and that's not even dealing with the gray area of Airbnb. This is an apartment unit that is running in an R1C area and causing a great disturbance to the neighbors. I'm really hoping that we can get a hold of this. And some of the other things that people brought to my attention, I've been able to do a little research for myself, we're certainly able to contact several of these sites that this property is posted on, and if we contact them as the municipality and say, this is not an allowed use, they will remove that listing. And I'm going to forward those along, just so that hopefully the ball's in staff's court to start making those, those reaches out to these sites that are posting this property. But I feel like we have another, a number of areas that we can combat this, or not. I'm really hoping now where it is just cut and dry, this is an apartment unit in an R1C where these poor neighbors are just not getting any justice, that we can move forward with something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things, and I'll try and cut, cut these short. The Eif doodle went out, we have two days that there's six of us that can all do it, April 16th and April 23rd. Councilmember Berentine, you didn't do the doodle, so if you could make either of those and I could submit those tomorrow.
I contacted the Mayor Pro Tem, it wasn't working for me, so I gave her the dates that I could.
All right. Well, what, can April 16th or 23rd work, and we could, both of us just hold those for now?
What were the four dates again, real quick?
Well, those are the only two that actually would make it really possible for all of us, April 16th, which is a Tuesday, and April 23rd, the following Tuesday.
Yeah, that was fine.
Those are fine? Okay. So, hold both of those right now, and we will contact the Eif possible firms to see if they can make those nights. So, first of all, we have to figure out if we all can make it, and usually they've been pretty easy going with either one, but sometimes we have one that can't, so we'll work on that. Councilmember Questa, we could ask a question?
Can you please repeat those one more time for me?
April 16th and April 23rd.
Thank you.
We had two to three missing on the other ones, so that's it. Then, I want to apologize tonight for mixing up a little bit, and particularly with Ms. Dickerson, I asked her to give her address again, and I really was confused, because I hadn't heard it, and I stupidly asked someone else to. So, I apologize for that. I'm sure that felt unusual, and that was not intended. I have, let's see, several things. The Inglewood Chamber Gala, I think I've told you about this, is on the 9th, it's filling up, so you do have to do online payment for that. They came out with their finalists today for the awards that they give, and so you can vote for those, there's like two in every category, so feel free to go and do that. The meetings last week that were canceled, a couple of you have asked me about them, the Dr. Cobb Subcommittee of Arapahoe County was supposed to meet on Wednesday to determine the fate of the three proposals that we have going forward. It has been rescheduled to next, or to Friday morning, very early, so we will be taking care of that then. Also, the Tri-Cities Network for the Homelessness Policy Group was canceled, and so we're meeting next month, but I did just want to make sure that you know that we're looking at a possible study that all three cities would do to better get data on those who are experiencing homelessness, and we're trying to explore the possibility of families being included in that, so that we have a better idea of who we're talking about, what their backgrounds are, what their connections are with different kinds of resources that could be available, that many of us or maybe those that, those that are dealing with this are not aware of. We've been invited to the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative via the Aurora contact person for that, which I think will help, and Member Carol Fay from Littleton will be going to that on Friday when I'm at the Arapahoe meeting. So, good movement on that. The Tri-Cities mayor managers and commissioners met on Friday and had a briefing from Kevin Bommer from CML on all of the things before us, and I think I wanted to just ask Councilmember Wink, if you have gotten any update on standings that they took at any of the last meeting, if you could forward those on to all of us, that would give you all an idea. It's too much to go over, but that will help everyone know what they're going to take stances, or what they are through the lobbying. Congresswoman Deget was on Friday morning, several of us attended that, and I'm hopeful that we will do some follow-up regarding a number of initiatives around infrastructure, particularly maybe stormwater, although there's a very small amount of money, anything would help, and as well as some programs that she mentioned around homelessness that could be useful to us as well. Let's see, I think that is it. That's it. I did want to ask the city attorney tonight, when she goes in her time, if there is anything financially that you can disclose for us regarding legal matters in terms of general ways, now would be the time to maybe bring up. If you don't have an idea of how to take care of that tonight, then that's fine, we could do it another time. But anyway, next up is our city manager's report.
No report tonight, thank you.
City attorney's report?
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. This council meeting is adjourned.